The appointed hour is here, 7 o'clock. We open the board at 7 o'clock on August 6th. I need to announce to the public that there's going to be remote participation at the start of this meeting right now. Ann Landry will be joining us from a remote location. I'm sure she's going to be a lot more comfortable there than here. Ann, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can, thank you.
And I do need to hear from you about who's present and able to hear the discussion. Do you have a statement to that effect?
Yes, there is no one here present and able to hear the discussion other than myself, other than someone who is less than one month old.
Got it. And one thing I'll just mention is that tonight, all of our, any of our votes will have to be roll called naturally because Ann is going to be able to speak to us, but we won't be able to see her. So I think we get going right away with liaison reports. Andy?
Sure. Let me just find my notes here. Couple of things. First, I wanted to say that at our last meeting, I argued that this board should stick with the appointment of a member of the ad hoc that was made about three months ago, who was a non-resident, and to the ad hoc committee for the Human Rights Board. I stated that this board should make an exception to the charter in this case. This was, upon reflection, a mistake. While my intentions were good, I recognize that the town charter is the basis for our representative democracy here in Redding, and that as a selectman, I am sworn to uphold the charter. With that in mind, I will no longer suggest that we make exceptions to the charter. Thank you. In other news, are you looking for a job that has great benefits, including food and good cheer, helps democracy, and that will earn you some cold, hard cash? If so, please apply to be an election worker for our March election. Simply head down to the clerk's office for more information about becoming one. There are, a few spots are still open. You will have an exciting four-hour training period. Is that still correct, Laura?
That is correct.
And then you'll be able to work on Election Day. A note from the Town Forest Committee that I didn't have a chance to send to Caitlin for the packet. The Town Tree Warden has marked a number of dead trees at the council ring that are to be cut during their thinning project. Our forester will prepare the technical specifications for a bid, and the goal is to bid the project in the early fall so that thinning can be done in late fall or early winter. So I think it's the Town Forest Committee feels, and I feel, it's important to get this information out to the public so that when they hear a chainsaw in the town forest, they know that it is legitimate. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Quick question if I could, and maybe it's to Laura who's in the room. If a Redding registered voter decides to be an election worker, I assume there's a provision that they can in fact vote during the allotted time as well?
That is, yeah, oh, thank you for on Election Day.
On Election Day?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Only update would be from the RMLD, the battery storage system is now online. I reported this actually at the last meeting when they did the groundbreaking ceremony, but I believe it's up and running.
Great, okay. Well, I've got one small piece of update. The Postmark Project is, as you have probably noticed, is really ready to come out of the ground. It's full bore, and I did have an opportunity, although I've only been back in town for about 36 hours, I spoke with them in my role as liaison to that project. And they're proud to announce that they're, you know, on schedule, marching along, and they're preparing the site really now so that it's clean and orderly. They want to be able to, you know, participate and put a good face on the Fall Street Fair. And they also wanted, they let me know that Commercial Space 1, which is if you think about the old post office, at the end of the ramp, you came up the ramp, and you know, there was a space on the, if you're facing the building on the far left, will be opening as a sales office in mid-September. They are far enough along that that time will be happening soon. I know we have some business with regards to them a little later. Today, we're going to approve a monitoring agent for that project that's relative to the affordable nature of what's going to be going on. So that project's moving right along. I have actually been away for over three weeks at the, and I just bring this up because I, I think it's important to understand a major event that happened in this country that is something to smile about. The World Scout Jamber erupted out of the mountains of West Virginia, and I was there three and a half weeks. It became a city of 55,000, 45,000 scouts from around the world, 6,000 of their leaders and 4,000 of staff. And I found it interesting and uplifting to see that we had 150 countries, all of these kids who had not known each other, found a way to communicate with each other, found a way to sing and dance and have a good time and enjoy friendship and fellowship and do all of those things. I mean, people around the world could learn a lot from what was going on in that 55,000 person city in the mountains of West Virginia. So I pass that along. That's kind of where I've been, so I have not been able to make any of the other committee meetings along the way. Tonight, we do have, we are, we do have a number of things to do. We're going to be appointing a board and committee members in just a few minutes. We're going to have an update on our Services Timeless Clock Project. So glad to see you here in the room honoring Camille Anthony. We've got some internal borrowing to approve. I mentioned to you earlier, we've got to appoint a monitoring agent. I would say that a very big part of our evening tonight, a very important part of our evening, Victor's going to be visiting us to discuss his guidance and our discussion on the senior tax relief. It is that time for us to recreate the home rule petition, and we really do need to get a vote done on that this evening. We've also got some select board policies to look at in the context of the DPW, and we're going to have a visit from Jane Casello around that and several other, you know, topics that are related to the DPW, second water meters, and some discussion around Waste Zero Recycling, another option that we've got there. So we've got a, it's a kind of a compact group of things to do, and we'll be working on those. I'd like to hear the Town Manager's Report, Bob.
Yeah.
Oh, Ann, I'm so sorry. Ann, I will not neglect you again, even though you're
That's all right.
A voice on the other side of the black box. I'm so sorry to have skipped you. Could you give us your liaison report?
No worries at all. I do not have a liaison report for this week.
Okay. Baby's good though, right? That's the most important.
Baby is asked one, thank you for asking.
Glad to hear that. You know, before I go to you, Bob, particularly Laura, you're here in the room, and this solicitation for, for new voting, you know, assistance, we lost a really important one this past week. Gloria Hulse, who is a dear friend of our family, you know, spent years as a teacher at the Sawyer Nursery School and has spent many years working with you, Laura, and I know you're going to miss her enormously, just personally and in light of all of the things that, you know, I know what a valuable member of the, of the election board she was, and I just want to take a moment and pay a little tribute to her and what she's done for this town and the many children in this town over the course of the years. So Gloria will be missed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Bob, you're on.
John, I forgot one thing in my, in the report, and that is, you know, the board is trying to mix up where we hold our office hours. I will be holding office hours this Saturday morning, 10 o'clock at Cafe Nero. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that.
Awesome. Yep. And finally, we are going to get to you, Bob.
I'm just asking for IT help for anyone that knows how to do a projector here.
Uh-oh.
A couple of community notes. September 25th, the Arcasa Annual Meeting will be held. It's going to be at the Jordan's IMAX Theater. It's going to be a screening of the first day movie, so I want everyone to get that date on the calendar. Last week, Mark and I and a couple of the folks started planning for September 26th, another community conversation at the Public Library. This one is to be called "A Matter of Civility." So again, September 25th and September 26th, two important community events.
What time is the September 26th?
I believe they're each at 7:30, but I'll double check on that. A couple of responses to the board emails that have come in over the last few weeks since you've last met. One comment was that the reverse 911 system was used for the Redding 375th Celebration, and why can't it be used for other things, for instance, the day of an election? The philosophy so far, and it's been since we started using it, has been for road closures. So the Redding 375th was only advertised because there were road closures, and the public needed to be aware when roads were closed. The advertisement was not for the event itself.
Got it.
There was another comment about some interest in playground safety and the material that we're putting on the playgrounds, and I would suggest that anyone with a concern, go to our Board of Health and ask about that. We are following state guidelines. If the state guidelines need some work and need some revision, then the Board of Health is the right vehicle to go through for that. There's been a couple of questions on Haverhill Street and Main Street paving. Let me just sort of start off by giving you an update on Haverhill Street. We hired, we're following a process that the Mass DOT insisted that we use. So we hired a consultant at our expense. They began collecting data on July 22nd, and they are now done collecting data. There was a suggestion from both ourselves and afterwards, a member of the community, shouldn't we wait till September? And Mass DOT assured us that they have models that can adjust for when it is and that we should, with all due haste, get this work done. So we did. Let me read to you an email received today from the consultant, and again, please bear in mind, this is the consultant's opinion, this is not Mass DOT's opinion, but nonetheless. "We have collected the speed data along Haverhill Street, and we're in the process of analyzing the data to see what speed limit or limits would be appropriate for this roadway. Based on the initial review of the data, it seems that a posted speed limit of 35 or 40 miles an hour would be appropriate, but we still need to complete our review. Also, we still need to analyze crash data to see if there are specific trends along the roadway that could be representative of a speed-related issue. Once we have our complete findings, we'll be sure to let you know." So that's, that's that.
And that was from Mass DOT?
No, that was from a consultant that we hired, not Mass DOT. He's going to submit his findings to Mass DOT.
Bob, did you say, did you say 30 or 40 or 35?
35 or 40 was the consultant's opinion based on his experience. But is he, as part of how we've hired this consultant, is this person tasked to make a recommendation?
No.
Just to provide?
He's giving us his opinion based on the data he has seen. Mass DOT doesn't care about his opinion or our opinion, they'll make their own call.
Thank you. On your next meeting on the 27th, I'll give a more complete update on the Main Street paving project, both the southern one that has begun and the northern one that would follow. There was one other email, and it was about employees, employee retention. The Chair, Chair Vanessa, had previously asked us to put that on the agenda. It is on the agenda, I think it's for November. It's just before the budget meetings, when our HR Director will come in and discuss employee retention as well as other HR-related issues. Thank you, John, that's all I have.
Brown?
Thank you. Andy, I want to thank you for your
Just come up so Ann can hear.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, how'd you do that?
Andy, I want to thank you for your recognizing the charter. It takes me a lot of work going out to get 2,000 seniors to recall election. And one thing I don't think many people know about Gloria, she was the one that was instrumental in getting the passage to have the warrant picked up at the police station instead of mailing him out, and that saved the town a hell of a lot of money over the course of years. Did she was a good person?
Yes, she was a good person. Any other public comment? Hearing none, let's move to our first item. We have a report from the VASC about appointing boards and committees?
Yes. Vanessa is not here tonight, so I will fill in for her. We interviewed Denise McCarthy for the associate position on the Climate Advisory Committee. We did not interview Catherine, Kate Kaminar, and Mary Ellen Killian to become full members of the Recreation Committee because they've both been on that committee for so long and have served well. In any event, the VASC recommends that we appoint Kate Kaminar to a full position on the Rec Committee, and Marion Killian to a full position on the Rec Committee, and Denise McCarthy to an associate position on the Climate Advisory Committee, and Mark has these motions.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Very good candidates, couple.
Now, I think with Kate and Mary Ellen, they are in associate roles now, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, okay, so they're going to move into, I guess they're filling vacancies.
Yes.
And is that going to leave a number of vacancies on the associates?
For associates, yes.
But not full.
Okay. Just an odd question. Ann, anything on your mind here?
No, I'm happy to follow the recommendation of that.
Okay. You're on, Mr. Doctor.
Would the Chair allow me to make one motion with all three people to take a vote, or you prefer one at a time?
Fine with me. But you're going to have to, you can do one motion, but we've got to name all three people to their appropriate
Board appoint Catherine Kaminar to a full position on the Recreation Committee with the term ending June 30, 2021. Second is move that the Board appoint Mary Ellen Killian to a full position on the Recreation Committee with the term ending June 30, 2021. And the third is move that the Board appoint Denise McCarthy to an associate position on the Climate Advisory Committee with the term ending June 30, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, so last motion, 2020 or 2021?
2020.
She's filling, filling out a term.
Yeah.
So she'll have to go through again.
Okay. Yeah, plus she's an associate, so
Yes, because they're usually one year.
Yeah, those are one year anyway, so I think that's what that's all about, so. Okay, so we need to have a roll call vote on this motion. Ann?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And John Halsey, yes. Okay. This brings us to a fun part. And fun in that, you know, we lost a dear friend and a public servant in Camille Anthony earlier this year, and, you know, and I don't want to steal any thunder, but I'm so glad to hear that something of permanence is finding its way towards honoring her service. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan and to Angela, and it looks like it's showtime now we get the thing. Who pulled that off? Who got the thing to work?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Andrew Lang, but I'm not sure.
Okay, so now there's a, there's
Ann, there's, they're, hi, my name is Megan Young, and with me is Angela Binda. We are representative of the Friends of Camille, and hopefully you all will see on TV there's, it's the Services Timeless Fund. It is to honor, as John said, Camille Anthony, who was the longest, one of the longest-serving board members, at the time Board of Selectmen members. It is a group of folks during Camille's service came up to me and actually said that, you know, Camille had always wanted a clock, and could we do this? And my opinion is always if there's a will, there's a way, right? So anyway, with that, we knew that we had to, if we were to raise money, the one thing we wanted to do is look at creating a, you know, bank account. So we were working with Redding Cooperative Bank, and they're like, well, if you do that, you mean it's going to be a tax event for you, Megan? And I was like, pause. We need to find a good not-for-profit person to help us. So we had the great fortune of having the Redding Rotary said, we're in, we will create, and that board voted on creating their own fund for it, and it's called the Services Timeless Fund, but it's through the Redding Rotary. So what that means, if you do contribute, you will get a tax donation, or it will be tax, it's
Tax deductible.
Thank you, a tax deductible donation. So that was really lovely. And then the other part that we got immediately from John, from Bob, was that the town would cooperate, would help make this happen. So it's just a wonderful, you know, and we've seen this so many times in town, how, when people rise to the occasion and do get something done. So anyway, that's, that's really where we are, and thank you for giving, letting us give you an update. Know that when we started it, I just heard it from Fran, that it was something that Camille was interested in. People said, why would Camille be interested in a clock? Well, since that time, I could tell you, the Redding Rotary, Board of Selectmen, the EDC folks, my husband would say that Camille always mentioned a clock anytime that she went to the Mass Municipal Association. So I feel that strongly that she's smiling at, from above, at what we're doing. So what we've done is we put together a work plan, right, and it, and we're starting the fundraising. It's been slow during the summer. We plan to really kick it off in September. We've gone to, and Angela has pictures of going, and if you don't mind me, as we're talking. We went to, Angela and Fran Osborne went to a clock factory, and this is a clock factory in Massachusetts, so it would be a Massachusetts-made clock. Everything in that clock, all parts, frames, whatever, are all done in this factory.
They're the only manufacturers where all of the parts, everything is made in the, in the factory.
In the factory.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that you'll see is there's many, many clock designs and shapes, and it's all really going to depend on working with the town to find a good place for it. The clock manufacturer themselves would do renderings for us. Once we decide on, you know, once the town decides on what, you know, clock that we want, we agree on a location, they'll do renderings for us. They can actually put in six-foot tall, there's a, there's actually a six-foot-tall gentleman that happened to accompany us. And so he and Angela both kind of wanted to get, give you guys an idea of like size.
You can, oh, go, go.
And, want me to go back?
Yeah, so there are all sorts of different ways to personalize it. You can pick out Roman numbers, or you can put, this one says class of 2019, so there are a lot of different options on placements to put, you know, whatever in memory of, or whatever. This is an example of, you can see it's really the scale. This is obviously, this is in front of their factory building, and they have a big green. That's a huge clock. It's a four-sided clock, and it's really big, but it's completely appropriate for that space. I would not think that something like that would work in our downtown or by the depot, but, you know, there are four-sided clocks and two-sided clocks and lots of different ways to personalize it.
Yeah, that's 20 feet tall.
Yeah, that's a big block.
That's exactly, so we're not going there.
And one of the things that they said we can actually, oh, that's, that we can do is if we send them pictures of locations with something, like a six-foot-tall person standing there, they can put, you know, they'll be able to drop different things into it and send it back to us so we could see what it would look like. And as we were going through, you saw there were some of them smaller, some of them larger, so there are ways to sort of see what would this look like at different places.
Right, so bottom line
And this is their, this is a catalog.
Bottom line is, we find an appropriate one, that they are, we really feel like it's a good manufacturer, and we can find something appropriate and that would fit the right space and time, and it'd be a lovely addition, and the clock might work as a, just as an option. We're like, we're thinking that the clock might actually work and be a good, and a good beacon, and a good, and a good kind of anchor for Haven Street somewhere, right? And so, anyway, that's really where we are. What we're asking, thinking about, with Bill still being around, one of the things that we really wanted to think about is maybe at the Fall Street Fair, do some kind of, like, you know, cutting the ribbon or just raising some awareness that he could be there and know that we're going this way.
So is Bill and his daughters involved in, I'm sure they're going to be part of your committee discussion
And they are.
About selection, which is great.
Yeah.
Because I know they have great interest in
Absolutely.
They love this idea, and they, and of course, you're great friends of Camille's, as many people were, but I know she had a close circle that's very interested.
Absolutely, and she has so many affinity groups, but the one thing that is really the thing that I do want to say is the family's totally involved and have trusted, entrusted in us to keep them posted and get things going. So anyway, that's the update.
Just go through it. You can see the different styles, or, you know, where, whatever is, whatever site you can pick, four-sided, two-sided, different styles to fit in with the location.
There's way more thing, many ways to do this, but, you know, again, we'll just do something
No choices to drive us.
A lot of choices to drive us, but
Right over here, along.
Say that?
Right over here, along.
Any, you know, anywhere is like, but coming I agree with you, like finding a place that we all agree on and then, and going from there. So anyway, thank you for the time. I want to say again, you can make your donation online, and you can send a check into the Redding Co-op. All of it's under Services Timeless. Someone really came up with a really good brand for us that I absolutely love and really has appeal to people, so I think it's a really good thing for our town to get around.
So there's one fund?
One fund.
And is there, is there a website or a Facebook page or something?
We don't have a Facebook page, but we'll be creating one, and also to keep people posted about how the funding is coming. But right now, you can go right online and, and contribute to the Redding Rotary.
Where, through the Rotary?
Rotary.
Go to the Rotary website, you can earmark that.
All I have to say is in honor of Camille or Services Timeless, and it comes right to me.
So it is one fund, even though it may say a couple of different things, it's one fund.
One One fund.
All devoted to this.
All going that.
That's great, so that people know that. And we'll just continue to keep talking about it. Will you guys have a booth, a little booth, talking about it at the Fall Street Fair?
Yes. I think we'll have a booth, or actually looking at putting it in multiple places, maybe through the town, we can maybe have, like, something, if you're interested, like, lead flyers there, lead flyers at the Rotary. We're gonna try to get the word out through the Fall Street Fair.
Yep, I think there'll be a lot of people that are gonna wanna participate in this. It'll be a nice landmark for the town honoring a landmark person. That's great.
So thank you very much for the time, and for all your help.
Great, thanks. We'll look forward to having you come back and keep us updated.
All right.
Megan, I think you can simply Google "Services Timeless." I think people can simply Google "Services Timeless," and it pops up.
Thank you.
Great.
It's Google.
For people who don't, don't necessarily remember all the details.
All righty, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so now we're gonna get down to how the sausage is made, we're done with the fund. Little internal borrowing going on, I think. You're on.
I'm Andrew. So, the packages that we have in front of you have all the details.
Yep.
There is one small, well, there is one change in it, and that's because the problem with internal borrowing is that what we try to do is, we try our best to estimate the cash flow for each project, and it's very difficult. Yesterday in the morning, I just got another update on the security improvement cash flow, and it comes out that we need to borrow a little more than what we expected to borrow. So I have the updated forms, if you wanna pass it along. Just a little background for the borrowing. All of the projects that you have in front of you, they were approved from the town meeting back in April. The total ask for the internal borrowing is $5,425,000. The details are in the package. The reason that we do the internal borrowing is that we, some of the projects, they start early, some start later in the, in the year, so what we try to do is, we wanna have the cash available, and we don't wanna hold this project anymore. So what we do is, we just do an internal borrowing, and then the goal is to pay this internal borrowing back to the general fund by the end of June.
Always by the end of the fiscal year.
Always by the end of the fiscal year. And then, we'll do a permanent borrowing. Once we do the permanent borrowing, we'll pay it off to the general fund, and then the project is just gonna go on normally. The reason, the other reason that we do this is, the permanent borrowing is a complicated process, it's a time-consuming and expensive. So what we try is, we try to time all of the project together and borrow only once. Hopefully, we'll borrow only once, so we can buy them. That way is a little cheaper, because it can get expensive to borrow a couple of times a year. But that's where, that's where we are.
So this is really a cash flow management thing?
Exactly.
This is nothing, there's no new funds. It's all stuff that's, you know, has already come through the town meeting, you know, filter, and it's just managing our cash, you know? Yes, Bob?
We initially planned to borrow last June, but honestly, there was no need for the cash that soon for any of these four projects.
Right.
And then, looking at the capital plan and the debt schedule going forward, we thought maybe if we waited till a year from June, we had a couple more things coming up, probably next April, to add to it.
Right.
And that indeed, of all the amount approved last April, we weren't gonna need very much of it within those 12 months, because some of these projects are multi-year. So the important change you'll see at November Town Meeting is, we had some debt service scheduled for the current year that we don't need anymore, because it's going to be pushed out a year. So we're gonna ask November Town Meeting, probably, to reduce the debt budget and do some extra capital at November Town Meeting, just so you're aware.
Questions for Bob or Andrew? Andy? Mark?
Two questions. So I understand the cash flow side. So in reality, because we're in a strong cash position at the moment, we're able to do this.
Right.
And we're saving months, probably, instead of borrowing $5 million, we're saving the interest, or we're saving the difference between the cost to borrow and probably the 2% return that we get.
Correct.
Thank you.
Andy, any questions? Ann, anything you'd like to ask Andy or Bob about this?
No, I, I have my questions answered, thank you.
Okay, so I think that being the case, if there's no other questions or discussion, Mark, you're gonna be on here.
All right. The amounts that we have listed here, now the corrected amounts?
So they should be. Yep.
These came out tonight.
Okay. Move to approve the advance of funds in lieu of borrowing for the following project, jects, with the understanding that the town will reimburse the general fund with proceeds from a note or bond within the fiscal year. Item one, Turf II, which was Article 15 of April 19 Town Meeting, the amount of $2.225 million, representing the entire amount. Item two, Building Security Improvements, which was Article 16 from that same April 19 Town Meeting, the amount of $1.7 million, out of a total of $4 million that was authorized in that article. Item three, the Auburn Street Water Tank, which was Article 17 of April 19 Town Meeting, the amount of $1.5 million, that's out of the $4.5 million that's authorized. And item four, Grove Street Water Main, which was Article 18 from April 19 Town Meeting, and the amount of $1 million, representing the entire amount.
Is it, do I hear second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll have a...
Do we wanna just point out the changes from the pack? And I think there's just two?
Yeah, the new motions are, I got them.
Right. Are, are, it's different from what's in the pack?
Right.
For the public, do we wanna state that, or?
Please, feel free to do so. You've got it.
$1.7 million is one of them, for Building Security. What's the other one?
And I, there may not be another, but I'm trying to whip through these.
Just to complete that, Andy, that what was in the packet was $1 million, I believe, on Building Security. Now it's $1.7.
Yeah, it's $1.7.
I think that should be the only one.
I think that's the only one, yeah.
Okay.
Just for the public to know, the way that the forms, those forms go to the DOR, and there is a section on the form that just keeps track of all the previous amount will change due to that change in $1.7. So they, it's just a roll.
It keeps, it rolls up as you're doing it. We may have to do this again, you know, on some other topic.
If we need, yes.
You know, before we get to the end of the fiscal year and do the big borrow, so.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Just to close on that, so after we do this 5.425, that would leave a potential remaining limit of about $4.7 million. Yeah, another $5 million, which will not be needed this fiscal year.
Okay, good. So the, so the big borrow will be this amount, it sounds like?
It'll be 10 or 11 million, whatever the total authorization was.
Yeah.
When we go to the public market, as opposed to the certain...
Got it. And that will happen, Bob, before the fiscal year?
Before, yeah, before June or by June.
Okay. Any other question or discussion? Ann, anything on your mind?
No, thank you.
Okay. That being the case, we'll have a roll call vote. Andy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ann? Okay.
I could just pass these around if you could sign them.
Can sign them, yeah.
There's one copy, so you can sign them.
So while we're signing that, it's time for us to talk about the Monitoring Agent for Postmark's 40R project. Bob, do you have that report, or?
I do. There was a memo in your packet from Julie Mercy, or the Community Development Director, at your last meeting, at tonight's meeting, and at your next meeting, you're gonna be asked for three different projects to approve a monitoring agent. There's a subset that, that's not a large group in Massachusetts that does this work, but Julie created a memo for you for the Postmark 40R, explaining the background and explaining that the Barnstable Housing Authority was a good choice that they made for this project. So there's a motion to approve the Barnstable Housing Authority as the monitoring agent. If you remember the discussion from the last time, sadly, a prior housing monitoring agent, rather, had passed away and needed to be replaced for an older project, I think it was Reading Woods. This is for the new project. You'll see another one for a new 40R at your next meeting as well. And all new projects that have an affordable housing component will have this aspect.
So I think it's important to notice that, something you mentioned, the public might wonder, why are we appointing the Barnstable Housing Authority? They have great expertise, project rather than a rental project, and the scope of it is, I think, has a shelf life, it, you know?
It's different than rental, yeah.
Yeah, it's very different. So, any other questions or discussion? Mark?
To your point, John, so at the last meeting, we approved a new monitoring service for everything in town, except this? No, 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 just for one older proj... One older project. I wanna say Reading Woods.
I think it was Reading Woods that we did last.
And next meeting, you'll see, I believe it's a different monitoring agent for a third project, the Sunoco, if you build Main Street project.
Right. Any other questions on this particular, the monitoring agent? Ann, anything on your mind?
I, I did think it was interesting that the Barnstable Housing Authority would be the designated agent, and just curious how common it is for other communities' housing authorities, authorities to act as the monitoring agent for other communities.
I can just say, Ann, this is the first time I've seen it. Obviously, I have limited background in that, but I did think it was a little bit, a little bit different.
I think there's some, the little bit of research I did in the last 24 hours, I actually was speaking with the developers, and they commented on the fact that it's very different when you're doing a condominium project, when you're selling. That's first off. And secondly, the, you know, the people doing this, there's some limits to, you know, not everybody's doing it anymore, you know? So it seems like we've got the right people here, even though it seems odd that it would be somebody from Barnstable, but it's, I think it's pretty straightforward about how they do it. Any other questions before we entertain a motion? Hearing none. Mark, you're on.
Move that the board approve Barnstable Housing Authority as the monitoring agent for the Postmark 40R development.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll start the roll call with Andy.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ann? Ann Halsey, yes. Well, it's showtime, Victor. Here we go. It's now time for, for us to talk about, and really seek some guidance here, is it's senior tax relief time again, or at least from the standpoint, I'm guessing, Victor, we've gotta be thinking about our next, our next home rule petition. Isn't that kinda where we are?
Yeah. Home rule petitions, by nature, particularly those financial-related for cities and towns, carry a three-year sunset clause. We are administering the third year of our Reading Senior Discount, and the last count, when I left the office a little while ago, over 80 people applied on August 1st. So the pace is brisk, and hopefully we get plenty of new people.
That's great.
What we're here to discuss is, some, I think all of you have understood where I'm coming from, and it's time to take a look at the exemption that we put forth before the town to enact as a home rule petition. And as it relates just to the home rule petition, honestly, only suggesting one small change. If you like, I do have a PowerPoint that takes a little bit through the history. I can do 30 minutes, 20 minutes, 10 minutes, 5 minutes, whatever you prefer.
Well, let's do it in the middle someplace.
Okay.
15 minutes. This is, I, I do think this is important for us to review the minutes, and, you know, and I know that, you know, in, in talking to you and others, that you've suddenly become, not suddenly, but over the last three years, as a result of the work that you did and the, and the board did in affecting this, we're kind of the, a center of information, shall we say. You answer a lot of questions for a lot of people, so why don't you bring us up to date, and then we'll see where we go from there?
Great. Through our little outline we have up here, it was first enacted for fiscal year 2018, passed by a special town meeting, and forwarded to the state legislature to be approved as a home rule petition. As I mentioned, typically, they have a three-year sunset clause, and as a result, the RSD must be reapproved both locally and at the state level to continue.
Excuse me, Victor. Ann, do you have this presentation in front of you?
Yes, I do, thanks.
Everything, everything that was gonna go up here that we're seeing for the first time, she actually got electronically in advance, so she's with us all the way.
The initial considerations with creating a type of senior discount, we look for the, we used a state means test that was already in place, the Senior Circuit Breaker Income Tax Credit. A local means test would be too difficult to implement with existing staff, and discussions would have delayed implementation of the RSD. Since we've done this, I can't count the number of communities that have contacted me, but very few have been able to enact tax relief on their own, because they go down these black holes. Discussions on top of discussions, rather than taking action and trying to help people sooner rather than later. If you overthink it, you'll never get it going.
Yep.
We had to use a residential tax shift to cover the costs. The basic points are 10 years of residential ownership in Reading, no other significant assets beyond the intended pool recipients, and no additional costs to the town. This is what we tried to come up with, and we did succeed. The RSD is a result of ideas expressed during override discussions, designed to assist long-term senior Reading residents age in place. We looked at Wayland and Sudbury as examples of senior tax relief. They both had a model out there, and we took pieces of each to create our own. For ease and simplicity, again, we use the Senior Circuit Breaker Income Tax Credit as the primary qualifier. The cost of the program is borne by the rest of the residential tax base. It's administered without additional costs to the town, and in my estimation, the application process is easy and straightforward. In addition to many meetings of the Select Board, we've done the following. Televised meetings at the Senior Center, various articles in the local newspaper. We put a mailer in with all quarter-one tax bills, which are the tax bills due and payable August 1st. We send individual letters to prior applicants, and shameless plug, I'll be at the Senior Center on August 14th, talking about this again, and all the other exemptions that are offered by the state through our office.
You gonna be cooking hot dogs and hamburgers out there?
I'll be ducking tomatoes mostly.
But there is lunch, actually. Yes, there is lunch.
Most of it on my shirt. By the numbers, fiscal year 2018, we had 196 applicants, and 186 were granted. Those that didn't qualify, it's because of the way their real estate trusts were structured. And we adhere to the state interpretation for other statutory exemptions, whereby you must be both a trustee and have beneficial interest in the property. The Select Board approved a reimbursement rate of 200%. The max credit that year was $2,140, with the least amount being $64. Total tax dollars shifted, a little over $361,000. It added about 4 cents to the residential tax rate, and cost the average taxpayer about $20. The average tax savings that year was 30%. Fiscal '19, 183 applicants and 177 granted. Again, trust issues knocked some people out of the box. The reimbursement rate was 150%, max credit was 1620, with the least being $165. And the total tax dollars shifted were a little over $262,000. It added about 2 cents to the residential tax rate, and it cost roughly about $10 for the average single-family taxpayer, but there was a CIP shift of 1.02, which absorbed a portion of that. And the average savings again in that year was 20%. This is just a notice that we sent in, with all tax bills that went out, and it's also up on our website, just reminding people, you have to reapply yearly for this form of tax relief, and, you know, tell them to touch base with us or check our website. Many communities, again, have contacted Redding about our Redding Senior Discount, varying stages of the state home rule petition approval process, Wakefield being one of them. My state reps jumped on board, and mine seems to be delayed while Jason catches up in Winchester and Paul in Melrose, so I'm a victim of my own success there. I, John said I've become a go-to person on this. I gave a presentation over 150 assessors, which is more fun than it sounds, really, in our annual meeting.
Were you trying to convince yourself or us?
I've got a free pocket protector. They're a wild bunch.
You can't knock those.
But many municipal leaders are looking to us as an example of what can be easily achieved. Our next home rule petition. Going forward, my biggest recommenda, my only recommendation really, as it affects the upcoming home rule petition, will be a fixed compensation level at 150%. It alleviates the uncertainty regarding the amount to be granted. One of the questions we get, 80 questions we got at the counter, how much are we going to get? That's up to the Board of Selectmen, so stay tuned. Be nice to give them an answer before they leave.
Well, that's kind of the, it's slightly ahead of the midpoint of, didn't we say it would be, I'm trying to remember when we originally crafted this. From, yeah, from 50% up to 200%. So, this goes to the higher side, but it locks it to avoid, you know, confusion or wondering, or even political jockeying that could go on. I mean, I know, let's just be honest about it, I think.
You bring up an excellent point, because we went into the unknown not knowing. The only definites I had when we started this, where we have 640 people that get a senior circuit breaker. The state data isn't broken down by renters versus owners. So, all it could do was examine Sudbury and Wayland's numbers, and I said, basically, based on their numbers, we should get about a third, or around 210 people or so. How much to give? I don't know. I don't know what kind of range is going to come through that door, and we could have had 400 people. So, we left the range wide open, mostly to back into a cap, a mental cap, where we didn't want to go shifting more than 1% of the tax burden onto the residential class. Fortunately, our numbers were coming way below that.
As I remember, the idea was, because we didn't know.
Exactly.
We didn't know what was going to happen, and we kind of knew three years ago that we were going to have the discussion today with data, which we did not have at that time. So, you know, and, and when you stop to think about this, I mean, somewhere between $10 and $20 is what the average taxpayer has done to really help, you know, roughly, close to 200 homeowners, which is kind of substantial when you stop to think about it. And the, the commercial offset has made that even less expensive.
Yes.
So, you know, looks like everybody's winning in this deal. So, so you think the only thing, the only change is really just kind of, that's the takeaway? We had a good target, just let's lock it in now?
That's where I'm at. One of my concerns that I was, that I expressed, 200% is a little bit too much tax relief in year one because of unintended consequences. 150% proved to be a nice, sweet spot. I wish I had this year's data completed to, you know, bolster my potential.
The legislature doesn't allow us to do that.
But that's where I'm feeling we'll be. But even with the too much tax relief, it knocks some people out of the box the following year, because they don't meet the minimum qualifications to receive the senior circuit breaker income tax credit. But between both years, we helped 120 folks each year, the same people, two years in a row, that shows us that their income, they pay significantly more than 10% of their income towards local property taxes, and more than likely will be the greatest beneficiaries of this program. And again, it would be at 150%, it's substantive, it's meaningful, and it's helpful, and it's steady.
John?
Yes.
Couple things, Victor, just to repeat what you said about kicking them out of the box. The 200% gave them enough money back that they were above the income line.
Below the 10% threshold for the senior circuit breaker program the following year.
And so then they didn't apply the next, they weren't?
They couldn't.
They couldn't apply the next year, right. So, and then the other question I had was, I thought that for the previous two years, the tax, this tax burden was not carried by the residents, but rather by the businesses when we did two tax splits in a row. What am I missing?
Okay. To be technical.
Yeah.
You're correct. The first year, in order to achieve an equilibrium based upon the residential versus commercial split, our first year, we did a tax shift of, and this number is ingrained in my mind,
You came up with it.
Tell me what you want. That's what you need. You want the pizza, well done.
Many, we went, you know.
Which, that was, you know.
Didn't that equalize the business contribution to the roughly?
Yeah.
Because? I think it almost gave poor Victor a, a heart, a heart attack.
Well, you couldn't pass it through, Andy.
No, no, no. I know.
Originally, you couldn't pass it through to the business.
Right.
So, in order to be able to create some kind of an equity situation, to be fair to, to all taxpayers, we split, we did that first split, that was three years ago, I think.
Yep. Fiscal '18.
And it was designed so that it would be, so that we would share equally in the, in the cost. Now, the last split actually.
Went a little bit more at one point.
Picked up a little bit more.
Yeah. That first year, we tried to keep the town at one tax rate.
Right.
But when you're slicing, it didn't result in that. There was a 2 or 3 cent difference.
Right.
When you're slicing the numbers that small, it's rounding is going to throw it off.
Yeah, and I, and I do understand that we, we asked a lot of you that year, so, thanks.
And then the second year, 1.02%. But.
Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, more kind of comments. So, to your point, Victor, with the 150%, we could be simple, reliable, and consistent.
Yes.
Make it very clear to people what's happening. You mentioned in your note to us that there were 30 or so people that missed out last year that you expected would apply this year, that they perhaps could have qualified and will come back in, most likely.
There were folks under the mistaken impression that this is a forever exemption.
One time.
Yeah. No exemption is forever. Every year, I feel bad, but disabled veterans come in and apply. Elderly and infirm come in to apply for the statutory exemptions. I don't know if I wasn't clear in my discussions at the senior center or any time I spoke publicly, but that's why we updated our letters going out. You have to apply every year. Direct mailings to people that applied in prior years, we'll continue that, to make sure they understand you must apply every year, because you may not qualify for the circuit breaker every year.
Right. I did some quick math, just take the, if the, those 30 people did qualify, came back in and got the average per-person relief, that would be another $45,000. So, the, the total transfer, if you will, would have been about $300,000 in that range, which to me feels, you know, about right, and kind of what I think the intent was and what the intent should be. Couple other questions. You, you mentioned that if we could be clear at the board level, that would open up some of your time, and perhaps the opportunity to leave the window open a little bit longer for people to apply.
Indeed.
So, I applaud that. I think that's really a great idea.
Thank you. One of the other things that as projects like Redding Woods and Johnson Woods, the ownership threshold goes over 10 years, we can more than likely see increased participation in this program. It's also good to be cognizant of the cost we're passing on to other taxpayers. But what you mentioned about pre-classification and a rate, it's a separate discussion from what we have to do relative to updating the home rule petition, which we can have as part of this, or we can have it right after.
You know, Anne, do you have questions or comments for, for Victor?
I think more of a comment, really. I appreciated that Victor and/or Bob included in the packet the brochure that is distributed regarding the different statutory and town bases for, for tax relief in town. But I was wondering, I, I was just hoping that Victor might clarify for the public. One additional form of tax relief that I believe is also available, not on a statutory, not on a statutory basis, but by town practice, there is some opportunity for seniors to volunteer their time in exchange for tax relief. Is that correct?
Yes. The Senior Tax Workoff Program administered to the local senior center.
And I would, and I think this is probably not right for tonight's conversation, but I would welcome an opportunity to speak with, with you, Victor, about possibilities for expanding that, or to allow it to be expanded, to include, to allow non-seniors who might be going through a temporary financial hardship to be eligible by some kind of volunteer service to the, to the town.
I look forward to a separate discussion on that with you, Anne.
Very good. Thank you, Victor.
I know this isn't a public hearing, but, Bill, you raised your hand, and I, I know you've been a close follower of this, and I'd welcome your comments.
On a personal level, the first year we gave two, I got the 1070 back from the state. The next year, because I got that, I had less back from the state. This year, I got $440 back from the state because it kept dropping. So, the balance between the two, I think, had I got one and one the whole time, would have been $230 difference.
So.
The one and a half, I think.
The one and a half sounds like it's the magic number.
I still, I still disagree. I think one's better, but I'll take that one and a half. He's an old Air Force fan, too, so.
Thanks for your comments, Bill. I, I appreciate the, I appreciate your comments. I know you followed this closely.
I sat down, I keep all my tax controls, and I took them out, and I said, this, this, this one and a half will work. And I like to see this. That's why I like Victor.
So, 80 applications, and it's only the sixth. How, you going to take them for the month of August?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's a great start. That's excellent.
Add one of the eight.
Might be number one.
Open the window a little bit longer.
Well, we haven't, we won't get to the part where we vote that. We're going to vote tonight about the new home rule petition, but, you know, I think what you're, what you're alluding to is, once we fix the number.
Yes.
Victor's going to be in a better position to have a more opened end to this thing. But this is for the next round that we're talking about tonight. We won't get to the, we won't get to the how much it is this year till in the fall.
Exactly. That's important to note. Our discussions tonight about future.
Yes.
Home rule petitions.
This is about getting this thing kicking down the road so that we can clear what we need to clear on Beacon Hill, which is always an adventure, although our reps have done a great job.
My compliments to Brad Jones.
Yeah. They've done a great job helping us with this, and, you know, so, so tonight, we're really, we will get to a vote here very shortly about this. Do you have anything else you want to tell us?
As far as the home rule petition goes, no. That's what I humbly request.
Everything's the same, and you're suggesting a fixed number of 150.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion from the board.
I've asked my question.
Okay. Anne, anything else on your mind? Mark?
No, but I certainly feel ver, I do feel very supportive of moving to, moving forward with this home rule petition.
Great. I, I do as well. With that in mind, you have, you have a motion for us, Mark?
Yes. Move that the board support a factor of 1.5 times the amount of the state circuit breaker for local tax relief, as will be proposed in a home rule petition to November town meeting.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? We have that the way that it's going to work best for you, Victor?
Yes.
Good. That being the case, let's.
I actually am just thinking that because this is taking the form of a home rule petition, I may need to recuse myself based on my day job working for the legislature.
Okay. So, since you're out of the room, that works pretty good. Plug your ears.
Where's the hangup?
All right. We're going to have a roll call vote then. Andy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Halsey, yes, and one abstention. Go forward, Victor.
Now, the, the other thing that, while it doesn't impact the home rule petition, it's more procedural. Two ends of the spectrum, 2018, difficult for me to sit here and come to a pre-classification hearing with what I think all the scenarios can be, and then have more scenarios put my way, and that requires, I'm not complaining, but it does require an inordinate amount of time to come up with the math and the analysis behind that. If we can minimize our minimum residential factor selections to even numbers or half numbers, like 1.01, 1.02, if there's some loose agreement that we can keep things like that, let's recognize that this type of tax relief created, despite our best efforts, created two tax rates at a time.
Yep.
Additionally, commercial tax rates always going to be a little higher than the residential. If we know that going into it, I think that our factors can be a bit simpler to choose, and if I don't have to come in for a pre-classification hearing where, as I just explained, try to come up with every scenario, and then boy comes up with 15 other scenarios that I fail to consider, I have to do the math on those and prepare for actual classification, and then we end up very long discussions that are probably confusing to the taxpayer at home, trying to follow along. I do my level best with my presentations to encompass everything, but I found that the more information I have going into it, the easier it can be. And everyone can still speak their pieces to where they're at, but it's a lot less number crunching, and if I had that type of understanding, I think I could easily open up the application process for the Redding Senior Discount to two months, August and September. That way, I'll have my numbers beginning of October, and we typically do classification in the middle of October.
Are you saying that for this year? Are you asking that for this year?
I'll take anything I can get.
Well, I mean, you know, it, it's material to understand that.
We're in August now, if, if that was the prevailing sentiment, and say, okay, we'll try this, Victor, this year. Well, I really can't, because I've already advertised a hard timeline on this.
Yeah.
So, this would be after this year going forward.
So, what you really need to hear from us is a general sense of, you know, I mean, so for example, this year, what we've just given you is, is the, is the guidance of this particular board, you know, as to where the next home rule petition is supposed to be built. So, maybe it's safe to say it, since you've had at least three people vote in that direction, that, you know, that's probably what you're going to be dealing with, first of all, this year. I'm going to guess, and we already have a split tax rate that's an even number, and that split tax rate incorporates the, the equity balance between, more than compensates for the equity balance between the residential and the home. So, beyond that, are you saying, are you asking the board to give you some idea of where, what their thoughts are on, on where the split's going to go?
I obviously come up with it. I obviously come up with, those of you familiar with my presentation, I come up with various ranges.
I know you do.
Those ranges are easy to come up with. That's not the hard part. The hard part is when the discussion turns to, well, what if we cut this one in half? And what if we looked at it this way? Can we get this to that? One year, I calculated a minimum residential factor on the fly on my cellphone. Quite the feat. Normally, I have my computer, my spreadsheet's in front of me, and it's easy to do that way. Trying to remember all the match andations and remember what your tax base is is kinda difficult. It's an uncomfortable position to be in. And I try to have everything planned out to a T.
I can't speak for the board, but I can say to you, I understand that complication. And I think, just like the senior tax relief was new, the year that we tried to make it balanced got complicated and cumbersome and heated, you know, I mean, there was all that going on. It seems like we've kinda stepped beyond that. And, you know, I personally, I'm just speaking personally, I can't speak for the board, simple's better. I think that the viewing public can understand it more easily. They can understand the discussion more easily. So, you know, I have no particular interest in splitting hairs here. I think that, I think about before we had senior tax relief. You'd come in with some ideas. They were pretty simple. They were pretty straightforward. There were two or three or four, you know, scenarios, and it was easy to pick, and on we went, and it got done quickly. And that's taken on its own life over the last several years that we may be able to get beyond now. I'm just thinking that out loud. I can't speak for what my fellow board members are gonna say or do, what I'm just telling you where I'm coming from, is that, you know, simple is easier, and it's, I think, better for the public to understand what's going on. So that's what I'd be looking for. Yes.
I agree with John in that simpler is better. I think in 2018, things went a little, got a little crazy. And perhaps not understandably, perhaps understandably so, because it was the first time we had that senior tax relief. But I thought that, my recollection of last year, you presented a nice suite of numbers, some choices, and that we, the board just discussed those choices. And, you know, not everyone liked the way it turned out, but the presentation was solid and clean, and, and the discussions were based on those, on those projected numbers. And I would be in support of, you know, having that type of simplicity moving forward in future discussions.
Yes, Mark.
So just to agree with, I think, potentially the three of us here, I think what you're asking for is what are the scenarios you should come in prepared to discuss?
Or, the scenarios, my past practice, the pretty simple ones that I come in with, it's a pretty good range of scenarios. But I would ask, if anyone's thinking anything different, just let me know, and I can easily incorporate it with the...
In advance. You want that information in advance.
So you can be prepared.
Exactly.
And I think we should pass that information along to Vanessa to let her know she is away at this time, but the four, four of us are hearing you. That it's not, it's so much better to get a simple presentation if you have advanced notice as to what any one of the members might be thinking, because then, then you could create it, and it's right there.
My motive is maybe a little selfish, but the end result is, we'll be giving additional time for senior tax relief.
Yes.
So we're gonna take an already good program, open it up more, give people more time.
And we'll have a shorter select board meeting. Both of them.
I didn't think of that.
I think it'll be clearer for the public as well.
I don't know if Ann has a comment.
Go ahead, Ann. I'm sorry.
Oh, I think it'll be clearer for the public as well.
Ann, anything on your, on your side that you'd like to comment, or ask a question?
Not, not at the time. Thank you, John.
Okay, good. I think we're good, Victor. I get, I think I hear what you're looking for, and I think all four of us do, and we'll make, I will make a point when I debrief with our chair, your, you know, your wishes to just get a little advanced notice that you can be, we make the whole thing simpler. The object of extending time to our seniors, I think, is a great one. And it doesn't sound like we can do it this year, because you've already kinda locked it in a certain way.
We're already hard advertising and everything.
And we gotta stick with that. But, you know, with the new home rule petition, it sounds like we'll just get better at this each time, and the state'll keep trying to figure out how we're doing it, try to replicate it, and who knows if they'll ever get it done.
When you have, when you have a couple of hours, I'll tell you about my battles there.
I can only imagine. That would be some entertainment, Victor. We should probably do that over lunch sometime.
Folks, thank you so very much, and as always, feel free to reach out to me with any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Okay. We're marching right along here.
It's still 4:30. It's like 10:00.
Yeah, it's 4:30. Doing good. So the next thing we have on the agenda, Jane, you and Chris are on, right? You guys ready to rock?
Oh, yeah.
Good. No pressure, but we're running ahead of schedule.
If I could just make an introductory remark that, this is part of select board policy. I think it's Article 4. Tonight's discussion is not meant to be highly organized and precise. It's meant to be a very broad discussion introducing a topic. There's lots of moving parts. At some point, as the board wishes, it can be a follow-up discussion or two, and eventually a public hearing. But this is not meant to be an organized, precise answer. This is meant to be, what is your philosophy? What are your feelings on different things?
Can you hear okay, Ann? Ann?
I can, thank you. Yes, I can, thanks.
So, good evening. So over the past several months, Jane and I have been working with the DPW supervisors to review the current select board DPW policies, and take a hard look at them and see what has to be updated to current procedures that we're following, current, you know, current day, to a current day policy. And so we went through and made our edits, listened to the supervisor's made suggestions, and ran it by Town Council. And what you have in your packets, I believe, tonight is recommendations from the, from Town Council about what they feel, you know, some suggested edits as far as, and also as far as which one of the policies shouldn't possibly be select board jurisdiction versus maybe reduced down to more of a Public Works departmental policy. So what you have there in your packet from Town Council are just the policies that Town Council feels would definitely be just select board jurisdiction. And then I'm gonna also go over to some of the other new language that we wanna propose to policy that reflects current practices we've been following, but that just has never been formally approved. So with that, I guess I can start. Feel free, if you have any questions, to start at any point. So the first point that we went through, and any reference to what a select one was changed to select board, very simple one. The next one is Article 4.6, Solid Waste Recycling Collection and Disposal Rules and Regulations. So the specific, specific proposal would update language to reflect the town's current solid waste and recycling regulations, just to bring it up to what JRM's current contract calls for, as far as what's accepted in trash recycling, what is not accepted anymore, and so forth with the changing times. Also included in this was additional language that preventing recyclable items, household rubbish, leaf bags, or bulk waste from being placed at the curb prior to 5 o'clock PM on the day prior to the regularly scheduled collection. This was changed because the current regulations are outdated, as I said, with town's current policy, and there were never any time restrictions on when someone could place something out at the curb, you know, nothing prohibiting them from placing it a couple days out ahead of time. So we put in 5 o'clock on the day before. This is it. So the next article is 4.71, Sewer Connection Permit Program, the subsection Purpose and Authority. The specific proposal would insert language pertaining to the purpose and authority of the sewer connection permit program, and how the program relates to both sanitary and storm sewer applications. This was changed as the new language will support practices currently being enacted and include the following additions. So the use of all public sewers in the town shall be controlled by the Department of Public Works. Any person wanting to connect to the sewer system shall abide by the regulation found within this article. All sewer laterals between the main and the street in the building or facility being served is the responsibility of the property owner. Any and all connections to the town sewer system shall be performed by a licensed drain layer as approved by the town. And any new connections to the town sewer system shall be subject to the availability of capacity as determined by the town.
Excuse me, Chris, when you use the words "the town", who is that in this instance?
As availability of capacity, that would be a determination by the town engineer, you know, as far as whether the system could handle what the flows were gonna be.
So the appropriate expert within DPW?
Exactly. Whether it's the DPW director, or a town engineer, or...
And some of this stuff actually lives with the selectmen at this time. Is that correct? It's just, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's from the old Board of Public Works.
Old Public Works.
Yeah, Board of Public, Survey or Works, or something. What was the, what was the elected board before the charter?
Actually, it was both. Board of Public Works, they took over, Survey, 1922, Board of Public Works, and next year, it'll be...
Is that the last time we updated this?
Well, I gotta tell you that this looks like, when I looked at this, it struck me that, you know, when that elected body went away, it was kinda like, well, we can't let this really get away from an elected body, because it was always with an elected body, when in fact, I mean, the idea of us being involved in some of this stuff that I saw in here is crazy. You need the professionals that do it, doing it, and making those decisions. Yeah, so that's kinda my take on a lot of this stuff that you're talking about, is let's get it where it belongs.
That's, I think, Town Council was looking at to kinda...
Practical.
Separate what happened, and much faster for the resident or the applicant.
Yes.
The next article is 4.9, Water Conservation Program. So this, this proposal would replace a section in its entirety to simply reflect MWRAs mandated water conservation regulations. So since this article was last revised, Redding began receiving its water from MWRA, and is therefore now obligated to comply with the MWRA water conservation standards.
And that's part of our contract, right, Chris?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the deal.
Right. So the next one, this is new language for, you know, procedures that have been ongoing, currently just never approved by anyone. Street opening permit policy, street opening moratorium. So the specific proposal would insert language to regulate all non-emergency street openings within the town of Redding occurring within five years of resurfacing the street. Why do we need a change here? Well, the town of Redding currently has no approved policy regulating street openings on newly resurfaced streets. So basically, we can repave a road, and then some, you know, we can have a resident on the street come and say they wanna, you know, have a new gas service put in, or replace his sewer line, or something like that, and now the street has got a, a brand-new road has got another patch in it. So some of the highlights, the new policy would include, all non-emergency excavation as determined by the Director of Public Works shall be prohibited in a newly paved roadway for a period of five years unless authorized by the select. If the select board authorized the excavation, the applicant shall be required to resurface the road curb to curb, or edge of pavement to edge of pavement, for at least 10 feet beyond the limits of the excavation. When there's two or more excavations that occur within 30 feet of each other, required paving would be for the required distance necessary to cover both, just so you don't have a series of patches in the road. And all work shall be performed according to the town of Redding standards and be approved by the Director of Public Works. Now, street, the street opening moratorium, this is actually very common in other communities. And in fact, as an example, we actually have one instance right now where a resident on a newly paved street within the past, like a year ago, is requesting to perform a, open up the street to have a new gas service put in. And so this termination on this policy is gonna have a great effect on, you know, their decision that they make, so...
And there is a way, if somebody, somebody doesn't necessarily have to wait five years to change their gas service, but there's a cost to doing business. And there's a mechanism, you know, it's not, there's a clear mechanism, the way you've made these changes, as to how it happens.
Right.
Speaking to some of my peers, some have gone so far as to propose and have passed bylaws that will put more teeth into the enforcement action, for instance, of National Grid coming in and doing a sloppy job on a newly paved road. I think that's a bit extreme. I don't think it's been around enough to know how it's worked, but the aggravation level in some communities for paving a road and then having it ripped up in a year or two by the gas company, and repaved in an obviously shoddy way, or any other vendor, is...
We've seen where they, it's not they're doing one house. They tear up blocks.
And these guys do a great job communicating with most of the vendors well in advance. They know our paving schedule. They canvass the houses in advance as best they can. You can't foresee everything. But other communities have not had the good relationship, I'd say, and much more chaotic results after roads.
Got it. Question? So this, what you're presenting here is not in the packet. Is that correct, or am I missing it?
I'm not sure. This, the PowerPoint was not in the... Yeah, this is not...
Right. A lot of the changes are in here, and I couldn't find this.
Yeah, this, this is not in the, in the packet, per se. I don't, I don't believe. The only thing, items in the packet are the policies that the town...
Well, this isn't a change. This is a new...
Well, the Town Council...
I think that's why it wasn't in there.
Well, right now, it's just, it's deleted. For, for, Article 413-4 is, seems to be deleted as far as, I'd say, just crossed out.
No, there was one section the Town Council deleted. They broke it up into sections, and they deleted others.
Okay. All right.
This isn't a change. This is a...
This is a new one, yeah. And it really is important, as Chris said, because we get approached days after a road is done, you know, frequently.
We can get to the full text, you know, as far as...
Sure. Yeah, it does say 413, Street Opening Permit Policy here, and it's just crossed out, so I assume you're replacing this into this.
Well, I think what you're looking at, what Town Council had there, is they were looking at another section, and instead of, we had, we had the entire document in one, one document, and they broke it up into individual documents, and so instead of deleting the bottom portion, I think they, they just kept it in there.
And what's important is what we have, I think, what we have in front of us. Yeah, what we have in front of us is kinda the, it's the rough draft, the words going. What tonight's really about is start the conversation, so...
A request related to that, too. So I'm falling in complete agreement. What might be helpful, and just as we do these things, especially when there's massive cross-out, is to provide the cross-out version and a clean version. And sometimes what we do is what I like to call a translation guide to explain this...
section is now moved to there or there. It's make it closer to you making decisions, would happen that.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, it was very hard to preview this.
When we did zoning, that's what we did. As you got closer to, you know, showtime as to what it really was going to be, then the clarity came up. This takes us in a great general direction though, I think, so we'll stop at, at least, unless there's another question, we'll let you keep rolling.
So the next one is 413.6, another street opening permit policy. This is driveway rules and regulations, which you've been familiar with from the past, that you've seen some of them. These are, again, policies and procedures that have been enacted over the years, just have never actually been formally approved. So this would insert language to regulate driveway curb cuts within the town of Redding. As I said, the Redding currently has no approved policy to reflect current practices regarding the regulation of driveway curb cuts within the town. So highlights of the driveway regulations include the following. So driveway shall not exceed 24 feet in width. Two driveways may be allowed on a single lot if there is at least 125 feet between openings, and this includes all circular driveways. Driveways that be at least 50 feet from the nearest cross-street. The grade of the driveway shall not exceed 10% plus or minus for the first 20 feet into the lot. And this is for all driveways that are pitched towards the road. This is to prevent excess runoff from going into the travelway. All proposed driveways must be submitted to DPW for approval, and the applicant may appeal to the select board if the permit is denied by DPW.
Chris, the, the section that got crossed out, looks like it was only fees and nothing to do with kind of the content. Do you know where the fees?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Is that what it is?
Okay, here are the driveway rules and regulations.
Oh, okay.
So you can see, you know, just what all the regulations are.
Okay, so I think what happened was, we had sent everything to Town Council. He didn't have a chance to review all of them, so what he submitted in the packet were things that he had a chance to review. So there's more to come, but-
But you're catching us up on all of it.
Right, you're right.
So they don't match.
And we're not supposed to be focusing too much on every single detail.
Yeah, so generally, you know, things that we took out, which you'll see at the end, and a few that we had to add because it was our common practice, but we just didn't have it documented and things that got carried over from the Board of Public Works that need to be updated.
If we get, I think we got to be careful. The stuff that we have in our packet is what he's already looked at-
Yeah.
-done some things about. But what we're getting is kind of the whole overview.
High-level overview, yeah.
The 30,000 feet.
Standboard.
This, or two or three meetings on a public hearing.
We're going to have a few meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so any more questions on the driveway regulations?
Nope. Not for me. Anybody else? Ann, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Sure.
So the next one we have here is, this is again, another, more new language. This is the public shade tree policy. And these are all practices and procedures that have been followed, but just has never been a formal approval done on these, on this policy. So some of the highlights of shade tree policy would include, "Public shade tree would be defined per Mass General Law Chapter 87, Section 1, as all trees within a public way or on the boundaries thereof. Tree warden is defined to be the sole individual within the town for making all decisions regarding public shade trees. No individual other than the tree warden shall be permitted to trim or remove public shade trees without written permission from the tree warden. If a request is made to remove a public shade tree and the tree warden determines the tree to be healthy, the tree warden shall hold a public hearing on the removal of the If the request is denied, the property owner requesting the hearing may appeal to the select board. If the select board at the public meeting determines that the tree should be removed, the full cost of removal shall be borne by the property owner, including but not limited to police details and restitution." This one part of it right here is obviously something that you'll want to have discussion on because, you know, obviously there have been circumstances in the past that you've ruled differently on situations like that.
We've been inconsistent. I got it.
So restitution, whether someone takes down a tree, you know, illegally, or, you know, if the town tree is just taken down and the board determines a restitution shall be paid, the way it is currently calculated is, for example, a 30-inch diameter tree could be thought of as 15 two-inch trees. And currently, the price per tree that the town would have to pay is $300 a tree. So for 15 trees, a 30-inch tree would be a total restitution of $4,500. Any unauthorized tree planting on town property shall be subject to removal by the tree warden. All new tree plantings within the town shall have species and location determined by the tree warden. You know, this is especially, you see this with like new subdivisions, you know, the tree warden will want to determine all the new species, the trees going in the subdivision. You know, and then penalties shall be imposed to both property owners and contractors for unauthorized removal of town shade trees. And then also, we've established construction standards when working near town shade trees, so contractors don't dig too close to a tree into the root zone. Don't park their vehicles on top of the root zone of the tree because it compresses the soil and causes a hazardous situation for the tree, et cetera. So.
Chris, is there any provision for damage to a public shade tree?
Yes, there is. I can actually pull this up. So we have a section here, penalties for injuring, injuring town shade trees. Mass General Law Chapter 87, Section 11, you know, talks about whoever willfully maliciously or wonkfully destroys or injures a tree, shrub, or growth, standing threat shall be punished by imprisonment for not more than six months or by a fine of not more than $500. That's Mass General Law.
In addition to the budget.
After they get on prison.
Right. And the stocks are built from the tree.
From the tree.
But unauthorized trimming of a tree shall warrant up to a $500 penalty per tree, dependent upon the damage performed as determined by the tree warden. Then dealing with like contractors and penalties, right, we have in here, and this is apparently pretty standard in other communities, I believe. Unauthorized removal of a tree by a contractor, first offense could be $1,000, second offense $2,500, third offense $5,000, and possibly being banned for working in the town for up to a certain number of years. So.
Just as a curious question, as you went through the definitions of what a public shade tree was, so I'm guessing if it's on the tree lawn of your property, that's, that would be a public tree.
Correct.
But, and of course, if it's in a public park, and, you know, I mean, there's obvious places. There was a line in there that said something to the effect, like if it was next to it. So you got a tree lawn in your front yard, and it's, whatever it is, 12 feet, it's a number.
It varies.
Yeah, I know it varies, so it's 10 feet and then there's a tree that is sitting three feet away. Now, is that adjacent to it, or is, so I'm just wondering as, because I think people don't really know when they're supposed to call somebody, to be honest with you. I mean, I think that it would be good, as you guys process this, to get some clarity so that when people want to, want to do something with their tree, you know, I mean, if I have a tree in my front yard that's grown into the wires, you know, you know something bad's going to happen. But it's sitting in the middle of my yard, can I do something about it or can't, is the question. And I think a lot of people have that question. So as you start to, I'm just giving you a suggestion, as you craft this, what I saw still left me wondering, and I think will leave other people wondering, when it's time to call, when you don't get yourself in trouble by trimming what you think is your own tree.
What we usually tell residents is, if you have any doubt, you know, just, just call us up and the tree warden will come out and make a determination on whether it's a public shade tree or private. You know, he'll be, he's glad to come out and take a look at it.
Yeah, I think it's just important as you recraft these things for simplicity's sake, you know, and it's going to get some press and there'll be a public hearing. Let's keep it as clear, as easy to follow as possible.
I'll sit on this one?
Yep.
Okay, so the next article is Addressing Standards and Regulations. So Public Works is responsible for issuing all house numbering and addressing in the town. So the town currently has no approved policy to reflect current addressing standards, which were based on the policy of the former Board of Public Works. So I'll just go through here and briefly, some of the, some of the highlights of these standards and procedures include that the town engineer is the sole agent of the town of Redding authorized to assign and modify addresses. When naming roads, you know, still obvious things, no two roads shall be given the same name or have similar sounding names, obviously for emergency purposes. I know we have a couple streets in town that have very similar names, you know, like a Sanborn Land, Sanborn Street. So we try to avoid that when possible. In residential areas, numbers shall be assigned every 35 feet along both sides of the center line of the road. In the, right out here in the downtown business district, numbers shall be assigned every 12 feet. So even numbers appear on the left side of the road, odd numbers appear on the right. And the lone numbers shall originate from the intersection closest to the center of town as determined by the town engineer. Now, the number assigned to each structure shall be the numbered interval falling closest to the front door or the driveway of said structure if the front door cannot be seen from the main road. So typically, what we do is, we have the applicant, if they're putting up a new house or something like that, they will submit to engineering a plan of their house and with the street line on it and showing where the front door is. And then we overlay that under our plans that have the grid for the street for the house numbering intervals and then just see where the front door, which interval the front door falls within. We do that for all new subdivisions, you know, we do a new layout of house numbering for each subdivision-
Right.
-and so forth. Accessory apartments shall be assigned the address of the main structure, followed by a secondary location indicator of Apartment A. So you have like an in-law apartment or something that you put up on your property. It would have the same address as, you know, the main structure, but it would be given that plus an Apartment A or whatever designation. Multi-level apartment or condominium buildings shall be assigned a building address, but then have apartment numbers or unit numbers for condominiums to follow. Then the first floor will be given designations of 1,001, 1,002, et cetera. Second floor will be 2,001 and so forth, like that. So that's it on addressing standards. Do you have any questions?
So we will not have a PARKA road?
No, no. Although we do. So appeals, and I know Town Council had some, a lot of comments on this section. So this is just updated language to reflect current procedures, why it was changed. The current language is not representative of current procedures in the appeal process of Article 4. The current language had appeals going first to the town manager and then to the board, whereas current procedure is appeals would just go straight to the board to be heard. So language is updated in that. And as I said, Town Council had some other suggestions. Did you see any packets there for appeals? This traffic signage or mechanisms prohibited. This is new language that we wanted to put in here. This goes along the same guidelines of current procedures and practices that we're currently enacting, but nothing formal had ever been approved. So the town does not currently have any approved policy prohibiting certain types of traffic signage or mechanisms which have the potential to either not perform as intended or have the potential to impair public safety as determined by both the police, Chief of Police and/or Director of Public Works. So this would more involve like signs that we've talked about at PTTF with the police chief and, you know, public safety and so forth, involving like animal crossing signs. You know, I know they're up in town, but, you know, the, from a, from a safety perspective, you know, they just, they just don't always, you know, they just don't work. I mean, the animals, the animals can't reach.
They don't know they're supposed to be there.
It's an educational opportunity.
For, what's that?
Mirrors?
Yeah. And the, and the mechanisms would be more in the, in the, like the mirrors that you see sometimes on roads. They're just not safe. You know, it's become, a mirror would become a liability for the town, you know, if there were anything to happen.
Okay, but put them there because they can't, they're looking for a way to solve their own problem.
Right.
Is there a way for people to make that type of a request, let's say, that's heavily populated with children area? Is there, I know it's not here, but is there a process that people can follow?
Yeah, yeah, they, residents can make requests through, through Public Works and then that request, then we would discuss at our monthly PTTF meetings. When that's made up of, you know, police, town manager, DPW.
They've been visiting us a lot lately.
And then the last article is consideration of multi-way stop intersections. The way the current language was written, in order to determine whether or not a multi-way stop is warranted, an engineering study has to be done to see if it meets the warrants. And the way the language was currently, it had us determining whether the intersection was warranted, and if it was warranted, then we did the traffic study. So it was like, had the order reversed. it was like, had the order reversed.
Right.
So, so that was that. And then the last three here that you will see are sections that we've removed from Article IV, DPW. This first section here referred to rules and regulations relating to parks, playgrounds, or recreation areas. Recreation used to be formerly a division of Public Works, including all the rules and regulations related.
So you're just taking it away?
Just taking it away and moving it to Article.
Yeah, because they were in here with all the rules, all the set of rules here a couple months ago.
Right. Article, the old Article 415, use, operation, and maintenance of the common. This again was moved to Article V, Community Services, because the use and operation of the town common is not under the purview of the Department of Public Works, but rather historical and community services. So while maintenance of the common is responsibility of Public Works, that language was never mentioned in the section, so the entire section is just, is going to be moved to Article V.
Got it.
And then this last, the last slide here, the old Article 416, policies establishing aquifer protection district infiltration system design guidelines, this section was deleted in its entirety from the Select Board policies as it's currently a bylaw.
Correct.
So no sense in duplicating that. So that's my last slide, so.
Awesome. Any questions for Chris or Jane?
Sort of for Chris and Jane and for Bob.
Okay.
At some point, since definitions change regularly, and we have questions about, is it a tree, is it public shade, is it, you know, the town common, who do I talk to? Wouldn't it be great to have a glossary and have it up on the website? So when someone has a question, they know where to look, or who to talk to. I also save a lot of time at Town Hall, as people kind of come in with questions. And it just strikes me, as we're defining language, it's a great opportunity to build that glossary.
I know a lot of departments currently on the website, they have like a Q and A section on the website that have a lot of, you know, good questions.
Frequently asked questions.
Yeah.
And maybe there's like a, pardon me, a tree that would show you kind of where to look.
Yep.
Yeah, since, to that point, since we're in the process, might as well keep it as user-friendly as possible. It'll stop you guys from, you know, being tortured, you know, because that's kind of what ends up happening. And if people don't mean to do it, they just don't know where else to go, is where it is. Andy, you have some questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple things. We had, in the first part, in the packet, the first page on this topic was page 21, and it starts with a letter, a draft letter, Dear Board Members, I forget who that was from.
That was from Town Council.
That was from Town Council. So it, there seems to be a larger question here. I agree that we need to have professionals obviously involved in DPW decision-making. I think we already do. But the, the general bylaw says the Select Board acting through the Town Manager shall be responsible for the establishment of policies and priorities to govern the operation of the DPW. And then it says we may adopt rules, et cetera. So that seems pretty clear that we are responsible for establishing the policies and priorities that govern the DPW. And then Town Council seems to argue that we let some of that go.
Town Council thinks you ought to take some serious thought to that, because it's more responsibility than you might be comfortable having, and that the bylaw should be changed. So that's why this is a complex.
Right, so, so, because I would be reluctant to do, to give up some responsibility that is given to us by the, by a bylaw before the bylaw is changed.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And I think that's part of this discussion, absolutely.
This is, I have the sense this is going to.
That's helpful.
A long time, Andy, I think it's going to be a series.
It's lasted 25 or 30 years without much looking at.
It's because it makes people's hair hurt.
Well, the Charter process, the old Board of Public Works was in the Charter, and it was useless there, but people just wouldn't let it go. And the Charter changed, and it's now time to start working on internal policies.
So, so my question, and my, sort of another forest for the trees, if you would forgive me, is that our policy was last, this policy of ours was last revised in 2005, I think, something like that.
And it probably was a very tiny section, just so you're clear, it was on full revision.
So, so I guess, I'd like to know what the timeline, or guess for the timeline would be for, we can't have a policy that's from 2005 when things have clearly changed so much. So either we change the bylaw and go ahead and do this, and how quickly can that be done, or we quickly update our, our policy so it matches what you, you folks are doing. So what's your thoughts on it? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that's the exact reason for this discussion, and why at the beginning I said it was, don't pin it down too much to scientific, very loose.
Right.
The board has to decide what path they're most comfortable going forward, and you've just made a statement which makes sense, that really until the bylaw changes, I wouldn't want to do X, Y, Z, and I understand that. That's the kind of feedback that's helpful.
How quickly could the bylaws be changed?
In theory, this November, but in practice, that's too soon. So possibly April, and I'm not sure if even that works. I think in order, it's kind of a chicken and an egg question.
Yeah.
Until you know what the end product wants to look like.
Yeah.
You're not sure what rules and regulations to change that would prevent that from happening, I think. So you wouldn't necessarily want to change the bylaw until you know how you want the policies, rules, and regulations to look, because you want to.
And to be split up.
Because you don't want to have to go back and change the bylaw again.
Sure.
I guess.
Yeah.
That's why this is, this is complex, actually.
But I think this kind of modeling that you're doing for us is going to help us in the discussion over the next several months.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to think it up. I mean, there's some, it's kind of like what Victor says, you know, tell me what you're interested in, and I'll, I'll build something you can look at, and then we've got a framework. I mean, you know, we do have a limited amount of time if we actually want to get something done, you know? The terms only run three years.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I do think that this, I think, I personally think this is really helpful, you know.
I do too. I do too, and I think maybe when the full board is present, we could have a quick discussion about whether we want to shoot for the moon, so to speak, and get the bylaw changed.
Wouldn't we want the model, though, that we, to Bob's point, the processing that they've done gives us the model, and we poke and go, well, yeah, but how about this, fix that a little bit, and there's kind of this back and forth that goes on. And then, when you get there, and it's like, yeah, this looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Now, I get it, you got to change the bylaw, but now you're changing it to something that actually is going to support what you want.
Right.
You know, and it is a chicken and an egg story, but I think you kind of got to do this part first to get the bylaw right, otherwise you're going to keep changing the bylaw, and that can only happen, you know, twice a year.
Yeah.
You know.
And I think that, and I'm trying to find the page that it's on, at the end of this, Town Council made a great, or somebody made a great chart, that goes down each section and recommends whether it be under the Select Board.
Yep.
Or the DPW. And I, and so if the board could focus, if we could focus our discussions on that high level.
Yeah.
Picture, and then, then the ones that we still want to own, I would be in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible with the DPW to get them in, to update our policy, so it's not 13 years old anymore, and reflects what, you know, your, your input. So I think that would be our recommendation. Look at the overall picture of what Town Council recommends we keep and we give away, and then for what we, the board wants to keep, the sections that we want to keep, get them updated in the policy as soon as possible, so the public knows what's expected.
And maybe that, some of the missing areas that you've highlighted here may end up being highest priority. In other words, they're, they're pretty, they're more straightforward, you can have a discussion, it's putting in policies and procedures that don't exist today. Maybe those are faster ones to accomplish.
What you can get rid of could happen faster than what you want to hang on to. So, Andy, how about you? You got anything you're interested in putting on the table here?
Um, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, good. So, um, thank you for this part, I know you've got more, but I'm old and I got to take a minute. So this seems like a natural place to break. We're running about 15 minutes ahead of schedule, which is very good, so we're going to take five and reconvene if everybody.
Thanks, thanks very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Andy, you're not back yet, that's okay, you will be, you know you will be.
Caitlin's back. The spaceship. Doesn't that look like a spaceship?
Where?
Oh, yeah, a little, yeah.
Yeah.
Anne from space.
What are you thinking about, Andy?
Thinking about launching air one?
So we'll give it a second. So just in general, though, are we going to follow the same format? Jane, have you given us some information to work with on these next two topics?
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, it's an overview, right?
Yeah. Is Caitlin there by chance?
Yes.
Yes.
Caitlin, I was just wondering if you wanted me to come by sometime this week to sign the paperwork that you had everyone else sign, or if it's not necessary, because you had a forum.
Yeah, not, not necessary, Anne, but you're obviously welcome.
Okay, very good, thanks.
I think we always need just the three, right? Documents that need all five.
Some of them need four, and some of them need five.
Andy, are you ready to go again?
I am, yeah.
Good. Okay, Jane, the floor is yours.
Okay. So I was asked to just kind of give an overview of the sprinkler meters, because in case you're considering doing the second meters in town. So originally, huh, sorry. Originally, it was adopted in 1992, there was a moratorium in 1994, that moratorium had an annual review. I found a letter that was sent out to residents in 1999 saying that whatever meters they had would be billed at the same rate as the primary, including the SOAR. And then there was a revision to the moratorium that had no, with no annual review. So that's where we've been with that. So a sprinkler meter is a secondary meter that measures consumption of water that's used primarily outside the house. We currently have 138 sprinkler meters in town. I kind of looked through the MWRA communities, and 60% of them allow them. And then I did a quick survey of our peer communities, and for the responses that I got back, 71% of our peer communities allowed them. 71% who are also MWRA, because I wanted to make sure that that matched up. There was one community that, and I had looked into this initially, saying, you know, is there any regulations with it? And one community thought that there was, they had the sprinkler meters, and then they put a moratorium on it because they were, they thought there was regulation, so we looked deeper into it. There are no regulations for MWRA or DEP banning them. The one thing is, they do have this guideline of 65 gallons per capita per day for both inside and outside use. Reading is at 44, so that's the only thing that we would sort of, you know, have to keep an eye on. There are costs if we decide to do that, of course, the resident has always picked up a plumbing permit cost, they would assume the costs associated with the plumbing. There's a backflow preventer that is required. The cost. The cost currently of a meter is about $300. And for a transponder, which they also need, is about $120. Um, and, you know, we're recommending that they, they cover the cost of the insulation of the meter by town personnel. Um, and if there's any maintenance for, of the meter or transponder, that they would pick that up. Now, that's not if the thing is malfunctioning. We, we replace that. But we have sometimes residents that do work on their house or, um, you know, inside or outside work, they damage the meter, they damage transponders, we do charge back for that. So that same would go whether it's a primary or secondary meter. The resident would have to have the backflow preventer tested annually. That's a regulation. And there's additional costs for billing because it would have to be a separate bill because each sprinkler meter has its own charge code. So considering conservation, it does go against conservation efforts unless that second meter is charged at a higher rate. Um, and we have a lot of people that do rain barrels and do an awful lot of conservation within town. And the way it would be set up is that almost negate their savings because they would have increased SOAR rates. But the water rate structure that I saw when I did either the survey or just in general in reading was that most communities that have the second meters have a higher rate for the second meters or they have a tiered rate. Um, and the second, uh, the second meter, the sprinkler meter is a higher rate. And generally speaking, they don't have abatements for sprinkler meters because those, if anything, is where you're gonna get a lot of your problems. And so they don't do the abatements.
So before you leave that slide?
Yeah.
Could you go back to that one for a second? So when you have a higher rate for the secondary meter or tiered charges?
Mm-hmm.
That secondary meter doesn't have a sewer charge, but it has a substantially higher water charge?
Correct.
Because at a certain point, particularly when you think about the MWRA connection, we're paying off, you know, part of what we're doing is paying, is paying off our obligations to them.
Right.
Besides the rates.
Right.
Right? So, so it may not be all it's cracked up to be, is I guess what I'm saying. Because you, it sounds like most everybody has a secondary pricing structure.
Yeah.
Or a secondary...
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost, almost everybody did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It actually makes sense if you back away from it. You know, it sounds good in theory.
Yeah, right.
Till you start digging in. Go ahead.
Um, so the impact on the SOAR rates, our SOAR rates, you know, aren't gonna change. Um, they, they are needed back to the MWRA system, so it is what it is. It's not gonna change if we have a secondary, uh, second meters in town. Um, but the water consumption at home establishes, is a way for us to establish SOAR usage, you know, it's 100% of that. So we're gonna be losing SOAR revenue. So somehow or another, we have to either raise rates to cover that loss or that's the only thing I can think of, because we have a set.
Yeah, we have a certain amount of money we've got to satisfy.
Yeah.
So sewer rates in the front paragraph there is really what the MWRA charges Reading?
Correct, yeah.
And then Reading has to make up some revenue loss to the customers in order to pay the MWRA.
Got it.
So Jane, um, on that first bullet, the, do they meter sewer flows from Reading? And that's, and they charge us based on that?
And they come back to us at the end of every year and redefine those, right?
Yeah.
Kind of tied to actual data?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
You would not want to check those meters.
No. Um, so it's interesting. So residents that do not install second meters, of course, will pay a higher share of that increase for the SOAR because if I'm, um, if I don't have a second meter but I'm still watering my lawn or filling my pool, you know, my SOAR rate now has gone up and I'm paying even that, that much more. So it's sort of, you know.
Yep.
That's it. Just that.
Okay. Questions? Andy, anything to add on this topic?
No, it was a good, good presentation, pros and cons.
Do we have, will we get this? I mean, would you find it valuable to have a copy of this to answer constituents?
Send it out and send it to Anne.
Of Jane's presentation?
It's in, it's in, we have it.
Okay, I'm not, my computer's not on and I, you know.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I read it beforehand. I thought it was a, you know, you covered all the points. Um, I am, at this point, not inclined to a second water meter based on what I, what you've presented. But, you know, I, I'm sure the board may, this is not meant as a definitive...
No, we're not, this is, we're not looking to vote tonight. We're looking for information. Um, Mark, how about you?
Um, just a quick question. You mentioned the 2012 Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and Water Resources Commission in conjunction with the Mass DEP, released updated water conservation standards. Um, so that's seven or eight years ago now. I'm just wondering if those guidance toward consumption are likely to go down further? 65, established in 2012. I don't know if they've updated it, but I would imagine at some point they're gonna look at it.
That's current. That's their current, the 65?
Yeah, it's current, but it was established in 2012.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And I would imagine that they're trying to encourage more conservation as time goes on. I wouldn't be surprised at all if that number at some point soon goes down.
Oh, would go, correct, yeah.
And that would concern, I think that that's the right guidance, is that we should be conserving. And I would be very hesitant to offer an opportunity to make it easier to go above.
Anne, anything on your mind?
Uh, no, we can move on.
Okay. Bill, you had a question.
Yeah, just an observation. Uh, I think water is a privilege that most people don't understand. Uh, I've had the displeasure of being without water for a few days. Uh, when they mix the water and sewer line together, wheels feel triple living. I gotta tell you, it's not very pleasant. Uh, I feel if people want the water, they want, let them pay for it. If they want to waste their water that way, so be it.
Okay. And I'm sure if, if we get to a place with a public hearing, you know, you'll be here to talk about that.
I would be.
So, great.
We're about to move to the clean zone, right?
Okay. Well, if we don't, if there's no more questions about the, the second meter, looks like we're gonna be at waste zero recycling.
Okay. So Waste Zero actually approached us a year or so ago. It's a company that works with municipalities to increase their recycling. We have an awful lot of recycling efforts in town, but this was a unique one. Um, so they, um, look to recycle primarily textiles. And so the, the company that they work with is Simple Recycling. Um, that's who they, um, would have in town. Those are the trucks. Um, the, the thing that, that they're offering us, it's free to the town. There's no obligation for any resident to, um, participate or not, but it's, it's easy. Um, it's, um, there's some beneficial, benefit to the town. It's not a huge benefit, but it saves in tonnage. So our current tonnage is $68.35 to Covanta. And, um, so we, whatever tonnage we don't send there, we get a benefit of. And then also, um, they pay us $20 per tonne for textiles. So, I don't know why that value wasn't coming up. Um, but anyway, that's, there's about, um, I think it's 15 million tonnes is this value over here, um, of textiles that are discarded, let's say, in the US. And that makes up, I think, a 6%. But in Massachusetts, we have 11% of textiles that are discarded. Um, so their target is not this 2% to 3% because those are recovered. Those go to the, um, drop boxes and to, you know, the various Goodwills and whatnot. But they're looking to recover this other larger piece of the pie here that, um, you know, is, I don't have it with me.
So people are throwing away more...
They are throwing away.
More clothes than giving them away?
Yeah.
Wow, I'd say, I wouldn't have thought that.
Yeah, I was surprised by that. But it's just the convenience, I think, and people just, you know, and the other thing is when we used to do a lot of the recycling, we'd tell, Goodwill would take things and they'd say, it doesn't matter if it was ripped, it doesn't, because they fix it and whatnot. But people look at something that's ripped and they just throw it out, you know?
Right.
But there's a lot of agencies that will take it. Um, so right now, we have, um, according to DEP, 8287 households. So based on that, they assume about 10 pounds a year of textiles roughly are thrown out. So that would generate, you know, 82,000 pounds, 41 tonnes. That's where we would get the $820. But we also save in the tonnage to Covanta. So it's not a huge thing. It's $3,622 roughly, let's say, a year. Um, but it's just one more avenue to recycle.
So are there obligations that we have to them?
No. Um, there is a contract, but the contract just sets the revenue. So it's a penny a pound or, you know, that type of thing. And then also that, you know, we have a right, if we have any issues with, you know, driver, any kind of problems, we have a right to, you know, dispute and say, we don't want that particular driver in town or that type of thing. But it's not a...
So they actually make the rounds every week?
They follow the recycling trucks every week.
Wow.
Yeah.
Some, some of the guys in the office that I work with grew up in, in Boston and they say they remember the Ragman coming around.
Oh, I remember the Ragman, I'm sure.
And this is like the modern day Ragman. But they also take, um, jewelry, purses, hats, toys, pictures, mirrors.
Well, they take stuff, too.
They'll take stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dishes, pots and pans.
Yeah, I'm a little leery and I'll try to show you why in a minute about the dishes and stuff, because it's going in a pink bag out to the curb. So, you know, you just, you don't want things broken and this and that. So I'm sort of advertising it as textiles because that's their primary, but they will take these other things. I would just want people to be very careful about how that's put out, you know, whether they put it in a old box and then put that in the, the pink bag or something, you know, just so that we don't have, you know, a mess on the side of the road.
Grab the dishes and the clothes.
Yes, yeah. So this is what, this is, it's pink.
It's pink.
Pink.
You know, so you could put dishes, you could put things in here, but it might be better to actually put the stuff in a box and then to slide the box into the...
Yeah, I've actually seen this in other places, in other parts of the country.
Yeah.
I have seen this in California where the big bags are sitting out with the, yeah.
Yeah. Let's see. Um, so they really do everything. They send out the postcard, have to get them, you know, addresses in town and whatnot. But they, they send out the postcard, they send out a brochure to every resident explaining what they take and the processes and stuff. They send out another postcard right after it starts and reminders. Um, so they'll leave behind, they take a pink bag, they'll leave behind a pink bag. Um, and so I asked them, like, you know, where do you, because I don't want them all over town. Um, so he's, you know, he said, we, we, they're pretty, um, flexible. He said, if somebody doesn't want it, you know, tied to their railing and they say, hey, don't do that, he goes, we'll, we'll put it where they want to put it, but we'll try to tie it, you know, somewhere to replace the bag that they took, so. Um, but it's never left loose, he said. It's just, so it's the pink bag. Um, and, uh, you know, it's roughly, you know, 10 pounds a year for, for each resident and, um, the bags are recyclable. And so I'll put things like this, you know, on the website, just sort of explaining it. There's no cost to us. There is a contract, but it's about more revenue contract than anything else. Um, it is, does not go after the folks who want the tax deduction. I mean, that's not who they're competing with, you know, that it's not a tax deductible donation, but, you know, so they, because I was worried about it affecting other people. He goes, no, these are people that just would throw it out, you know? Not, not bother going to Goodwill or whatever. Um, and they will, you know, um, as Andrew said, they'll collect more than textiles. Um, I definitely wanted it, he said they would take it in other things besides the pink bag. And I said, no, I want the pink bag because I don't want any confusion with JRM or anything else. So, you know, we're gonna make it a requirement that it's in a pink bag. Um, and if there's any questions, they, they very quickly gave the phone number and they seemed like they, any feedback I've gotten, I've talked to a lot of communities that have it, they love it. They said they're very customer focused, so. And those are some of the items that they take in addition to the textiles. And those are the communities they're currently in with the number of households in each community. So you have seen them around.
Yeah, I definitely have seen them.
Yeah.
Can you put that back on the pickup?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to go back?
No. But we'll take them down the garage.
I, I'll take all the packaging that you want to give you. I recycle them and give them to Mission of Deeds.
Oh, okay.
Down about 20 in the last year.
Yeah.
Most expensive one, 99% of the time it's a belt.
We get a lot of those electronics down the garage.
They don't take any electronics, though. They're not interested in that.
No, no.
Just stuffs.
Just, uh, yeah, more household type of things and, um, yeah, no TVs, nothing like that, so.
People are paying to make that stuff go away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sonic Lodge here in town just did a, you know, a thing and they, they, they get paid for it and people were, it wasn't like you could just come and drop it off. You had to come and pay.
Right.
Those are mine down the street. People are looking to get rid of their stuff.
I'll tell you, recycling, um, it's been a nightmare for these businesses. So I had asked JRM. It changed quite a bit. When we get the contract to start in 2016, it was, it had just beginning to be a downward mark with recycling. And now, um, it was rolled into ours and it had to be second. We didn't have a separate, um, rate where other communities, if they want them, don't you want to own the recycling? And I said, I don't want it. And because at the time, they were making money on it.
Right.
So the next year, so we have a 10-year contract, the next year, it all changed. And now that is, they're charging $95 to $110 a tonne to get rid of recycling.
To make it go away.
To make it go away. That's the stuff. And we have about 3,000, um, 3,000 pounds a year, tonnes a year. So roughly, it's about $300,000 that we kind of saved.
Saved by, by doing, by not trying to make money on it again. But, yeah, I think that was a really smart move.
That was smart.
And that's because, um, that our, many, much of our recyclables went to China.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I like this idea very much. I think it's very forward-looking and, um, I will tell you that Massachusetts has not opened up any new landfills. Um, and so, um, the more we can do to reduce our, our waste stream, the more, um, fiscally responsible we're being. And I think this is a great idea.
Mark?
No comments, thank you.
Anne?
I, I, I think this seems really intriguing and I was just wondering, is the select board going to, would the select board be asked to vote on, on the town of Reading entering into this contract or is this more of a, an FYI?
Um, you could vote. Um, if you, you don't have to vote. If you just indicate you like it, then we'd go forward and test it out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I kind of like it. It sounds like everybody, it doesn't sound like there's any downside to it.
Right. It raises awareness, which is probably the best part of it.
Yeah. And the town has, seems to have responded very well to recycling.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I think that's one of the main reasons why we don't hear a lot from JRM is because our residents do a phenomenal job. They get very clean recycling. Um, that's huge. That is so big compared to other communities. So it's not costing them as much as it does everywhere else.
I think people have just gotten in the habit of knowing what to do and what they're supposed to do. It seems to work.
Yeah.
Well, um, I, I think I'm, you know, does everybody, am I, hearing from the four of us assembled that this is something we ought to give, give it a try? Is that what everybody's thinking?
Yes.
Anne, you feeling that way?
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah, and so, I, based on that, I would say, Jane, use your judgment, and, you know, if, if you feel like this is something we should proceed with, I don't see downside, I mean, if we save tonnage going out that we're paying for, and get some small, you know, payback on what goes into the system, and it doesn't cost us to promote it.
Right.
I'm kind of wondering, you know, where's the catch?
What's the catch?
I think down the road, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, the startup, I'm sure, is a little complicated.
Have, you know, have Ray look at the contract.
Yeah.
Be sure we're not getting into...
Got it, he's waiting to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't think we've got anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Look at that.
A couple of things I wanted to bring up, John.
Yeah. Okay, we got through the agenda, in, in the Lotto period. However, we do have some other business to transact.
Yes.
We've got some minutes to deal with.
And future agendas.
Yeah. So, let's talk about future agendas, I, from, in looking downstream, it appears that we've got a pretty full dance card for the 27th.
Yeah.
With potentially more showing up yet.
Yeah, let me talk about the two potentials. One, there's an online discussion, I saw the link in patch, on gas leaks, and so, Vanessa agreed today that that would get ten or fifteen minutes of discussion at your next meeting. I don't know a lot about the topic, other than what I read online.
Is it more than we've done in the past, because we've had that as an agenda item?
I think it's quite significantly different, and I've, I've asked Pierre Townes today, and I have not found one that is doing this, I have found one that heard about it, Middleton heard about it, and took no action, but I'll be in a position by here to give you a lot more information.
Yeah, because I think we, we did have an extended presentation by our own climate committee.
Correct, correct.
About leaks and red...
And this, as I understand it, from the petitioners, is for the town to pay, according to Vanessa, hire a consultant or hire an expert to assess the condition of the situation, as opposed to National Grid telling you what it is, and then, I'm not sure how repairs get done differently or that, but a lot of work...
Makes for a better lawsuit.
Well, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I, I've been talking to some of the petitioners over the, and, and I agreed to sponsor this, I don't know what that means in the context of a select board, but, and, and I'm sure they'll give, they'll give a good presentation, but I think basically the concept is that it's uncertain if National Grid does a super thorough job in identifying all the leaks, the leaks have costs to the environment, for instance, they're a big chunk of, or fairly sized chunk of greenhouse gas emissions, the methane coming from these large leaks, and there are other detriments as well to the community, so the idea would be to hire an independent consultant, have town meeting approve that, foot the bill for that, fund that, and then use that independent data to require or put pressure on the, the gas company to repair the largest leaks. I hope I got that, for those listening who are involved in this, I hope I got that somewhat correct.
Okay.
But I think that's the general address.
The second issue, which is a question to the board.
Before we jump ahead, sorry, back to that one, would it be possible for town council, there's an assumption that by hiring this consultant, something is going to happen?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what might that be? My guess is it's the Public Utilities Commission that would be the group involved, so what I heard about this thing was that utilities have a certain amount of time to repair something once they're made aware of, and the problem is assessed, and that there is a desire, not to do that assessment kind of until they have time to do it, but that's accurate, that was the inclination, so I'm wondering what the intent is of hiring this consultant, does it put it on the dance card, does it push it ahead faster, and is there in fact an obligation that now is owned by the utilities to fix it in a timely manner? I suspect that's exactly what they're hoping to accomplish.
Yes, and I'm embarrassed that I don't have that information at my fingertips.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's possible to, to have an understanding of what they got.
I have asked town council to just give a quick look, because we as a town don't have any regulatory authority.
This is subject for, what you're saying is a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's got, you know, some meat on the bone.
A question came into Caitlin today about November town meeting, and as I understood the issue, it wasn't so much to add an article, which is a very big thing, as opposed to request some funding, which can have some time, and doesn't need to be decided in the next four weeks or six weeks.
Yeah.
So, we had a presentation, I think back when we had the big issue.
Yes, right.
Where there was a, started this discussion that indicated there were lots of other places, and I think maybe in the last month, we got a letter, probably from one of the people in the petition, so, yes, it's on the agenda for next time, great, if town council is looking into it, that's wonderful.
Is it on the next agenda, or is it...
Will be.
Okay, got it.
We'll have to put it somewhere.
Yeah, so, I, I have the answer to Mark's question so far, it's an I petition, if you go to I petitions.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
You can look at it, and it says, "The audit will provide the town with the information it needs to work with National Grid to prioritize the repair of our largest and most harmful gas leaks in Reading within the timeframes of the current legislation," I guess there's legislation that they have to do it within a certain timeframe, and then they added some information, under reporting of leaks by utilities, new requirements that utilities must repair large volume gas leaks within strict time limits, et cetera.
But that will all come out in the next meeting.
But that's, that's, Mark asked what...
Yeah, got it.
What the thing is.
Town council's on it.
Yep. That's good.
The next one's a question for the board, you've discussed in the past, recently, thinking about a home rule petition to, I guess I'll say regain control over local roads, if that's something the board wants to pursue, that's, and it's through the home rule process, that's something we'll have to get started soon, so I wanted to, I was going to bring up under my report on the 27th, but I thought maybe an agenda item, even if it's ten minutes, would be helpful, since Ray will be at the meeting, you can have it.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Personally, I'm very interested in regaining control of our own streets, so, to be honest, it's not as though they took control and took over the maintenance expense, they took control in the seventies, and we have to do everything, and they get to tell us what to do.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a background, John.
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
Reading agreed for some reason, whatever the reason was, but if that's something that the board is interested in pursuing, then we'll throw it on the agenda, start the discussion, and Ray can give you a timeframe, because as, you know, you saw from tonight, Victor needs to be working on the home rule petition now, and that's one we all easily understand.
Those take a long time.
Yes, so if John said yes to that, I would say yes to that.
Yeah, I'd like to look into it.
And, how do you feel about that?
She probably has to recuse herself.
I think that that should, I don't, I don't think, I, I do need to exercise some caution when I'm weighing in.
No, and we're not at a voting place, Ann.
But with respect to an agenda item, that's perfectly fine with me.
I got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And, you know, I realize you may need to step away from the, the discussion at that moment, but it sounds like, generally speaking, that that's a good topic for an agenda item.
Go ahead.
Okay, anybody else have anything burning around a future agenda item that we haven't discussed, and if so, by all means, feel free to forward that to a request to Vanessa, and then that'll get processed in the, in the normal way. We do have a very full dance card on the 27th, for sure, so... Okay, last thing is minutes, what do we got, what do we have in here?
I sent some comments to Caitlin at lunchtime during my lunch break, and they were in this handout here.
Yeah, they were forwarded to us.
So, people could see what you were...
Yeah, so Ann could also see it.
Yeah.
And they're relative to the minutes that we also had in the packet.
Right, right.
For, for the last, for the ninth, July ninth.
So, one is for the 25th, June 25th, and then there's two for the 25th, and there's two for the ninth, and I have a question about the ninth as well, for the board.
Can we clear up the 25th?
Yes, yes.
Let's get that one out of the way, and that will accomplish something. So, so you've got a couple of amendments in, and so if you'd like to just state those for the 25th, and then we'll go from there.
So, the, the, I asked to replace the statement, the Board of Health, under liaison reports, the Board of Health had a discussion at their last meeting about the issue of violations he raised, and I changed, I re-watched the video, and I said something to the effect of, "The Board of Health discussed revising the monthly health agent report, but did not come to a conclusion," I don't know if that's perfect either, but it's closer. And then, the other was that, I think there was just a word left out, for a statement that Bob said made.
Okay.
And that's it?
Any...
I do, Caitlin, I apologize for not having sent you anything in advance, I do have one edit as well, but I don't know if we need to vote first on, on Andy's.
Nope, what, what page is yours on?
Okay, page eighty-eight, so I, it's the, under the eco-friendly initiative.
Yep.
Ms. Landry noted that the state runs a green community program that gives money to communities with every green initiative they take, it's not with every green initiative they take, but that, I think it provides financial and technical assistance to communities for green initiatives, but it's not for every green initiative they undertake them.
Okay. So, if I take out the word "every" with that, for green initiatives?
Maybe assist with?
With, um...
Assist with green initiative?
Say "for, for green initiatives," maybe.
Okay.
That would work, I think.
Okay. Anything else, Ann, for the, for the 25th?
For the 25th, that's all I had, thank you.
Mark?
Moved that the board approved, the meeting minutes of June 25th as amended.
Second?
Okay, any, any discussion? Okay, we're going to have a roll call, Andy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And Halsey, yes. Okay, on to the meeting minutes of July 9th. So, Andy, you do have some, and before we get there, Ann, do you have any corrections or additions to the ninth?
I, I have some friendly amend, what I hope would be a friendly amendment to Andy's amendments, but I, I don't know first, like, to Andy.
All right, well, then, if they're relative to the same topic, since Andy's got these printed, let's hear those.
Okay.
Hang on one second, do you have anything, Mark, that's separate from this?
No.
Okay, so Andy, floor is yours.
Thank you, under the section ad hoc, Human Rights Commission, Committee, and I know this was a long, circuitous discussion, so I think Caitlin did, certainly did her best, but I requested that the statement, "Mr. Friedman just wants to continue under the current format, which violates the charter," to something I think reflected more of what I, what I stated, "Mr. Friedman stated that he is not a fan of opening up boards and committees to non-residents, however, in this case, because the board voted to appoint a Medco parent, it would be wrong to turn around and say that she can no longer be a full member of the ad hoc."
So, it sounds like you're proposing a gent, a gentler description that is essentially saying the same thing.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, the, the statement just wants, it almost sounds like I was being dismissive, and it was a little more nuanced than that.
Okay.
So, I just watched the video and picked up phrases and words that I said and put them together to reflect what I said.
And so, you know, of course, this is based on the minutes of that discussion.
Yes.
Not relative to the statement you made at the beginning of this meeting.
Well...
Which is very different.
Yeah.
And you can't revise the history.
No, 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 I'm not asking to revise, this is actually what I said in that meeting.
Okay.
And, and I think my statement tonight was acknowledging that that was...
Got it.
It was a tough situation, but that was not the right call on my part. And then, the second one was, so, so this, this one was interesting, this was actually, John, you made a statement, and then I asked if I could respond to that statement, so I asked for, "Please move the following, Mr. Friedman feels this is similar to a situation with the Board of Health two years ago, and noted at town council, said it was okay to continue asking why it is now not okay." So, I asked first to move that to the, under the paragraph where you, you stated, "Mr. Halsey agrees with..."
With Ms. Landry's.
Right, right.
But they're not connected, they're non sequitur.
Well, in the meeting, actually, what I, I included my response to what you said, and it says, it says follows, "Mr. Friedman saw an inconsistency with a similar situation two years ago, September, oops, in September, cross out the second N, 2015, people noted that the board appointed Board of Health members in a way that was not consistent with the charter, at the time, the select board decided to stick with the appointments, town council stated that we'd have to have a hearing to remove them, why that answered then for a charter challenge, and yet now we have a change of tune," that's sort of literally what I, I, I just pulled that right out of the video.
Well, it seems like...
I'm not trying to rewrite.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah.
When you want to move it, you want to move it because you think it's clear that you're responding to what John said, but Vanessa did the same thing right after you spoke.
She did, she did.
She responded to what John...
So, actually, that's fine, then, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
So, that kind of...
So, forget, forget that recommendation.
And Ann had some sick questions.
Oh, my, what I hope is a friendly amendment is that, that the language that you're proposing, Andy, that, like, at the beginning of each sentence, to just say something like, "Mr. Friedman said," because otherwise, it might sound a little bit at that meeting, like it says, "Town council stated..."
Oh, yeah.
"...present at our last meeting, but if you missed the meeting, follow that."
Yeah.
It makes you feel like...
That, that's very true, John, and obviously, it was clear in our, in the meeting, yes, so what would your friendly amendment be, Ann?
Oh, just that, like, the beginning of each sentence, say something along, or just be clear, like, "Mr. Friedman said," or, or "Mr. Friedman noted," something like that at the beginning of each sentence.
Okay.
Rather than a, a sentence starting with "town council stated," which makes it sound like...
Oh, I see.
...town council was at the meeting and stated.
Yes, yes. So, how, how about Mr. Friedman...
Noted.
Noted that, noted in 2017, that makes it clear.
Right, yep.
"Mr. Friedman noted in 2017 that town council stated," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I think that clarifies.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Well, you know, the only thing I, I, well, I just, I didn't review the tape, but I think that we want to be careful that we're not revising the history of what actually happened, I mean, and I don't know that we are or aren't, but it seems like we are, I mean, I like the idea of what Ann has suggested, to clarify that the town council was not here, you know, kind of dueling on the topic.
Yes.
Because he wasn't.
Yep.
And had he been, I'm sure he would have been able to, because...
Well, I don't think that's, that's not part of the minutes, we're just... We're just talking about the minutes.
All right.
And I think it's important that the minutes reflect some of the, to me, some of these subtleties, and I took time to use phrases and sentences that I actually spoke. So, but I, Ann, I agree that you're, so I'm not changing history here at all. I mean, if you want to wait and go back and watch the tape to see what I said, that's fine with me.
No, I don't need to do that.
But I...
I just don't, I just want to be sure that we're not attacking town council in this change.
No, no, I'm just, that's what I said, and I'm not attacking him, I'm just saying that why the change of tune now? Because this is what, that's sort of what led to my confusion about, and about my confusion about having not abiding by the charter in this case. So I felt that was relevant. It's what I said, and that's, that's all I'm trying to...
Yeah, and that'll be up for the next debate, but I get we're just trying to solve the minutes here.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, it's what you said, and we've clarified that town council was not engaged in this.
Yeah.
Nor was there anything going back and forth. That seems like it makes sense. I thought Ann's suggestion was an excellent one. Anybody else see anything here? Bob, does that seem to be...
Well, if I had heard all that that night, I'm not saying you didn't say it, but I didn't hear it, I would have understood your point more than I did that night.
Yeah.
Caitlin and I discussed the next day, and we were trying to figure out what was Andy referring to that was two years ago. We didn't know.
Yeah, it wasn't dated, it was two years ago.
I think that this became very clear the next day in your emails when we were figuring it out.
Right.
But I think that night, I don't think the specific date was said, like the September. I think it was more of a broad statement of...
Yeah, two years ago.
Something that happened in the past with the Board of Health, and town council gave an opinion one way that doesn't seem to be the same.
Yeah.
I think it was a very broad statement along those lines, and then going forward, I think you figured out that this was exactly what you meant.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure it was that clear that night.
Yeah, so I thought, obviously, I thought it was very clear. But I did say all of these things in the meeting. Now, the September, the reference to September 2017, I might have said earlier in the meeting, and we, so we can say, we can put that where it belongs, but that sort of seemed complicated. But we can, if you'd like, I'd be happy to rewatch, you know, have us go through the video.
Yeah, there was just one other thing that I don't remember hearing at all, and I've obviously been doing, typing up the minutes, so I could be wrong. But the hearing to remove, the town council stated that we needed to have a hearing to remove them. I know this was all going on during the time that we did have a hearing to remove other members. I'm not sure if that's getting mixed in with a different conversation, because I don't remember town council saying we had to remove...
No, we're just going over the minutes of what I said.
Right, I don't remember that ever being stated.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that you saying that that night.
I can send you the timestamp.
Because this is very clear, as opposed to, again, maybe I wasn't listening carefully, but I just don't remember that detail.
Is it fair to say, you know, we're making progress on this? You want to get it right, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we all have, believe me, I have a committee meeting going on in my head most of the time, and why you can't all understand what's going on in there beyond me.
Yes, yes, yes.
But I think we all kind of have that.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand that you want to, that you want to be properly quoted.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're going to get there tonight, although we've made some progress.
We hold off on these ones, and I'll just go back and revise it.
Are you okay with that, Ann?
Yeah, absolutely.
Put them in, I'll obviously have what you said, and then I'll go back and make sure I'm not wrong, and then...
Right.
Ann, are you all right with that?
And I'll put them again in next week's packet for the 27th, that we can do those again.
That sounds great. That sounds great.
You, you good with that, Ann?
I am, yes. That's totally fine.
All right. Let's agree that, then, that we will not be acting on the minutes of 7/9 tonight. We'll, we'll roll that up into the next meeting.
Okay. So the other question I had for 7/9 was that, at the very, very end, it was, no, actually, it was, I apologize, it was at the beginning when we had the hearing, it's on page 92, the top of page 92, that states, I'm sorry?
The letter hearing?
Yeah, the letter hearing, top of page 92. There's a, there's a one-sentence paragraph that Mr., I don't know how to pronounce his name.
Oh, Did Julia?
Mr. Julia?
Did Julia?
Yeah, I think on page 92, it's spelled differently, maybe.
Okay.
It's just Julia.
Oh, I forgot, it's D.I., Julia.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
So that's a correction.
Okay.
Argued that Mr. Patel did not intentionally sell to a minor, and that they cannot find him in violation because he was, it was not his intent. And then it followed with, the board had mixed opinions on how to proceed, and asked him, asked about finding him in violation of their policies. I didn't so much get the sense that we had mixed opinions on how to proceed. I think we wanted a number of, you know, we asked for a number of things, one of which was, John, I think you, or you asked, so he contended that his client violate the law that was, that was, the book that was thrown at him. And you, and he cited some case law, and you asked for us to see that case law to see...
He was, he was citing case law.
Right.
And I said, okay, do you have it? And he said, no, he was just, he had recollection of it, and I said, I think we got to see it.
Right, right.
So, and I, and I thought, I think that's noted in here.
Well, you know, like, I guess what I meant by that is when he threw in the whole, the intentional thing.
Yeah.
That's where everyone kind of got thrown off, because we thought we were just trying to find him in violation, and he said you're supposed to find him in violation of intentionally selling.
Right.
And then I felt like that kind of threw everyone off.
Um, yeah.
That's why, maybe I should write that a little better.
Yeah, I think, actually, I made a comment at that point, just to make sure that what the hearing was about relates to...
Right, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, all the activities that took place, because it wasn't clear to me something.
And I think also, there were, we weren't looking at policy, we hadn't included...
Right.
Policies that we felt he was in clear violation of.
Right.
Therefore, we continued the hearing, to be able to encompass...
That's what I guess I meant by the board had mixed opinions on how to proceed.
Actually, you know, in talking about this now, I think, you know, mixed opinions doesn't mean disagreeing.
No, right.
It just means we had very, we had very response.
It wasn't an argument.
That's fine.
It wasn't a disagree, it wasn't even a disagreeing opinions.
No.
It was different opinions about how do we get from A to B?
Yeah.
And I think the conclusion we came to was, continue the hearing.
Yeah, what do we want to see?
You know, and I think that a lot of things are going on now around that, towards the 27th.
Yes. You'll have the continued hearing plus a new hearing about letting through your policy.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
So we'll finish this on the 27th.
Yeah.
Any more business before the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Roll call, Ann.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Andy?
Andy, yes.
Halsey, yes. 10 o'clock, we're all done.